Clark, we are reporting out of closed session. We have two items. First item.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The first item of council reporting of closed session is to receive the report and that confidential direction to staff be confirmed.
Yeah, it's like to move that. That's real. Second, Council Kim. How much questions? For the vote.
Who has been requested for the first item of council reporting of a closed session? Counselor Gillen, how do you vote? Counselor Gillen votes yes. Counselor Kim? Counselor Kim votes yes. Counsel Thompson? Counsel Thompson votes yes. Counsel Gallo? Counsel Gallo votes yes. Counsel Wies? Counsel Wies votes yes. Mayor Morakis?
Yes.
And Counsel Gardner? Counsel Gardner votes no. Motion carries.
Okay, second item.
Second item of council reporting of a closed session is to receive the report and that confidential direction to staff be confirmed.
Something like to move that. Second item, Counsel Gillen, thank you. Second or? Counsel Kim? Comments, questions? All the vote, all the vote.
Who has been requested for the second item of council reporting on a closed session? Counselor Kim, how do you vote? Counselor Kim votes yes. Counsel Gardner? Counsel Gardner votes yes. Counsel Thompson? Counsel Thompson votes yes. Counsel Gillen? Counsel Gillen votes yes. Counsel Wies? Counsel Wies votes yes. Mayor Morakis?
Yes.
And Counsel Gallo? Counsel Gallo votes yes. Motion carries.
Okay, confirm and bylaw. Counsel Thompson, second or? Counsel Gallo, thank you. All the vote, all those in favor? Pose that carries, motion to adjourn. Counsel Gardner, Counsel Wies, all those in favor? Pose that carries. So, Clark, time is seven oh two. I'm going to call this committee, the whole meeting to order. Town of Aurora acknowledges that the Inishinaabe lands on which we live and work are the traditional and treaty territory for the Chipewas of Georgina Island, as well as many other nations whose presence here continues to this day. As the closest First Nation community to Aurora, we recognize the special relationship the Chipewas have with the lands and waters of this territory. They are the water protectors and environmental stewards of these lands, and as a municipality, we join them in these responsibilities. We further acknowledge that Aurora is part of the treaty lands of the Mississaugas and Chipewas recognized through Treaty Number Thirteen, as well as the Williams Treaties of nineteen twenty-three. Shared understanding of the rich cultural heritage that has existed for centuries, and how our collective past brought us to where we are today will help us walk together into a better future. A motion to approve the agenda with the additional items. Counsel Wies, second. Counsel Thompson, any comments, questions? Call the vote, all those in favor? Pose that carries. Any declarations of community interest? Seeing none. Community presentations, we have one, five point one, Krista Sharp, manager, Restoration Lake Simcoe Region Conservation Authority, regarding LSRCA restoration projects in the town of Aurora. Welcome, Krista. You have five minutes and the floor is yours.
Can we just go down?
Krista, if I, you probably just want to lift up your mic a little bit too as well, so it's, there you go. Yeah.
Thank you. Uh, so thank you very one for having me today. So my name is Krista Sharp. I'm the manager of Restoration Services with the Lake Simcoe Region Conservation Authority. Um, and today I'm going to give you a little bit of background on our restoration programs and some of the projects that we have ongoing in our watershed, as well as in the town of Aurora. Um, so we have a variety of different funding programs within our, our, uh, within the conservation authority. So our base restoration assistance program, we do have, uh, funding through our offsetting programs, uh, as well as we work with our foundation and we go out to find other grants through, um, the provincial and the federal governments, as well as to other private organizations to find the best amount of money for our partners and our, um, and the projects that are occurring in our watershed. So this is our restoration assistance program. Um, you can see it highlighted at the top. There is, uh, the ones in green, which are more our agricultural focus programs, and the ones that white in the bottom are more for our urban areas, as well as with our municipal partners. Our offsetting, uh, policies, just to give a little bit more information about this program, is we, um, when a development is going on, um, we try to get them to avoid. So I use the example of if there's a forest, um, they, uh, you try to avoid removing any of the trees, um, and if you, uh, or you try to minimize, um, and if you cannot minimize, you mitigate, and then the last option is compensate, and that money comes to the conservation authority to, um, use that money to do, um, things like phosphorus reduction, um, and putting water back into the ground through water infiltration, as well as through our ecological offsetting policy for natural heritage restoration. Um, these are things like wetlands, reforestation, stormwater pond retrofits, um, things like pre-treatment devices and stream bank erosion. So over the, uh, in the, in twenty twenty-four, um, we completed within our subwa- within the watershed over a hundred restoration projects. Um, this included things like thirty-one hectares of land restored, um, and almost close to four kilometers of stream being, um, restored within our watershed. Uh, and out of these a hundred, um, and one projects, we, I went back into our database to get a little bit more information about what has happened in the town of Aurora. So since two thousand and seven, we have helped fund, um, close to a hundred and fourteen projects. Um, this is a total, uh, cost of nine million dollars to all of the partners, and, uh, these, this is reduced phosphorus by thirty-eight kilograms, um, planted thirty-two thousand trees and shrubs, um, and almost six kilometers of, uh, stream has been buffered. So to give a few examples of things that I thought would be interest within your watershed and then other things that I thought would be good for funding, um, so one was the Devon Place Stormwater, um, project. So this was a stormwater pond retrofit, as well as a stream restoration program. This project was led by the town of Aurora. Um, and we were helping by, uh, funding this project. We provided almost four hundred thousand dollars towards the restoration work. Um, and this was a stormwater pond retrofit and include the construction of the creek, as well as the adjacent stormwater infrastructure. And as you can see in the picture, there was some failing gave me a basket, um, in a stormwater pond that was very degraded. Uh, so another project that I thought would be of an interest, this was actually done in the, in Oxbridge, but we do fund things like stormwater treatment devices, like catch basin inserts. Um, these are, um, help trap sediment, so you have to reduce the amount of maintenance happening in your stormwater ponds. Um, this particular project in, um, they put install, installed sixty-seven of these catch basin inserts, which equal to one point four, uh, kilograms of phosphorus being reduced per year, and we were able to fund about fifty percent of this. Um, so in progress for twenty twenty-five, we have about forty-five projects in progress, and seven of these are in the town of Aurora. Um, these include things like, uh, community events that we're working with, are some of our community groups, um, as well as we are helping fund the Henderson Drive Wildlife Crossing, um, and the Hamilton Park Wetland. So this is the, uh, Hamilton Park Wetland, if anybody's, uh, familiar with it, in the town of Aurora that we are leading. Um, this is to enhance the habitat on site. Um, it is a wetland restoration, as well as some other habitat, um, infrastructure that's going in, and it'll be one point two hectares of habitat being, um, enhanced, as well as, um, frag mighties being removed and other habitat features. Uh, and this funding was, uh, being led by us for design and construction. It was approximately four hundred fifty thousand dollars. So I want to thank you for having me today and, uh, listening to a little bit about our projects and programs, um, and I don't know if there's a question?
Yep. Thank you, Krista. Counsel, can I get a motion to approve? To receive the? Counsel Thompson, Counsel Gallo, any questions? Presentation, Counsel Gardner, go ahead.
Uh, thank you very much for coming. Thanks to the authority for their work on this. Uh, it seems to me that any projects you do, uh, in municipality, whether on private or public land, would have to be, um, jointly, um. There would be contribu- you would, you would only do a project if there was contributions either from municipality or private landowner.
Krista.
Through you, Mr. Chair, uh, yes, we, we do like to have contributions, whether that is cash or in kind, um, from our landowners. Uh, we do sometimes provide a hundred percent funding towards these projects, um, but a lot of times you're going to have contributions for, um, say, tree removals or other types of, um, things or tree maintenance later from the landowners. Um, so there's other ways that the landowners can provide assistance and kind of buy into the project without having to provide the cash assistance towards it.
Counsel.
I have a project that you might want to do. Me? Thank you. Thanks.
You. Any other comments, questions? Counsel Gillen.
Thank you, uh, through Mr. Mayor, to the, uh, delegate. Just a question, just follow up. Counsel Gardner was suggesting, if there's some stream water, um, management projects that were, um, being sought by private citizens with private property and it fell on jurisdiction of Lake Simcoe Conservation Authorities oversee, would there be some sort of assisted funding with that with private property owners? Should that be a road that they wanted to go down? Would there be some help there?
Chris.
Yes, to Mr. Chair, uh, yes, absolutely. We work with our public, uh, partners as well as our private partners. Uh, we do have a, an agreement, so if it's a, if you are leading it, we will have a grant agreement with you. If we are leading, we'll have a memorandum of understanding, um, that just kind of provides that, um, kind of protection and kind of, uh, um, agreement between the two of us, but we do work with private landowners. We do a lot of wetland enhancements on private landowners to deal with, um, water on their property. Um, but we have done some stormwater features like permeable pavers and things like that on private land.
Counsel.
Thank you. I was thinking more, uh, along the lines of erosion of, uh, water creeks that are running within Aurora. There are some properties that are owned by private citizens, and they feel that it's a, it's a huge expense on them personally, but yet falls in the jurisdiction of lands, uh, Lakes and Conservation Authority and approvals and permitting and so forth. So it's a lot of a burden on some private citizens, and I just was unsure of the role that the conservation authority could take in order to assist them to help mitigate, um, any further erosion on properties and obviously respecting, um, you know, the surrounding plantings and the water and so forth. So is there some specific communication or information that you could provide, at least for myself? I know I get questions from, uh, people in my ward, and they feel a little bit over, like, burdened with some of this responsibility.
Yeah, absolutely. Sorry, I must have, uh, misunderstood the stream piece, but yes, uh, we have funding for that. We have up to twenty thousand dollars, um, per parcel under our restoration assistance. And then we also have funding through our phosphorus offsetting for that. Um, it's based on, um, the P reduction, so there's got to be a little bit of, uh, analysis that goes on of how much we think, um, erosion and how much sediment we feel might be going down the stream, so, but we will come to do a site visit. Um, we will help them through all of the process, um, help them with permits, help them with finding contractors. We do, in certain instances, lead on design and construction, um, but it's all very project specific.
Counsel.
I appreciate that, and I'll probably reach out to you offline, just get some further information. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Counsel Thompson.
Thank you. Uh, thank you very much for being here tonight, Krista, and going over not just the current projects, but giving us a little bit of a tally, uh, since two thousand and seven. That's great that you took the time to go back and identify all the projects that have, uh, LSRCA has been involved in. Thank you.
Counsel Gardner, second time.
Thanks. Just clarification, when you, uh, said twenty thousand per parcel, are you talking about twenty thousand per residential lot?
Uh, yes, uh, I said it by the stream, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, through, sorry. So, um, yes, so, uh, it's twenty thousand per parcel. Typically, a landowner, a private landowner, it would be one, so they'd get twenty thousand dollars. Um, very often when we're working municipalities, they will be doing a longer stretch of stream, so they could be eligible. So for Devlin, for example, they got sixty thousand dollars from that program specifically, because it was three separate parcels. Um, so that's how we kind of divide out that piece of it, and then the phosphorus again is, is a separate analysis.
Counsel.
Thank you so much.
Any other comments, questions? All the vote, all those in favor? Pose that carries. Thank you very much. Coming up this evening.
Thank you.
With delegations, we have one, Sean Dean, resident, regarding a couple items here. Sean, welcome. Nice to see you. You have five minutes and the floor is yours.
Thank you. So, yes, I wanted to cover off on three agenda items tonight, and I'll do my best to speak quickly, so. Um, the first comments I'd like to share is with respect to electronic voting. I definitely am against that, and as this document, uh, sits before council today, it is missing all sorts of information, specifically the cost, um, to procure someone. Um, we've missed an opportunity to engage. Uh, I didn't notice this on engaged Aurora, so I would have loved to, and, um, perhaps other, taxpayers would love the opportunity to see and, and vote on whether or not this is fits for them. I'm really concerned about security um, with online. I've never voted online. Um, a quick Google search will tell you that there's no regulations right now, um, in the, in the province, and there's been some challenges. So I'm I'm really concerned about making a decision before May first or a year from now, when we don't know the cost, and I'm really concerned about costs right now, when we're, uh, in a tariff war and a recession, and we have a long, uh, a funding gap in our budget that's been carried forward for a couple of years, so every penny saved, um, w- will be valuable. So the, on a security, uh, standpoint, um, when someone uses a paper ballot, they are authenticated with their ID and in person. I don't know how the authentication works with this. I don't know if there is information from, um, previous, uh, experience that, um, was presented at another meeting, but I have no idea how someone would authenticate, and it just opens up a, a lot of questions. Um, so for example, there could be a, a family of four, um, with a couple, uh, teenage voters, eighteen and nineteen-year-olds, and maybe, uh, grandma's living in the house, and no one, uh, is, has an interest in voting, but one individual says, okay, well, I'll, I'll vote for everyone, and they can vote for everyone online, is, um, that opens up an opportunity for me to talk to a neighbor who might be apathetic and say, well, I'll vote for you, and so this is really concerning, and if it's done in advance, um, I don't know if these results are shared during the camp, election campaign, so that people know where they stand during an election, because that would motivate a candidate to go out and hustle, um, and identify all those, uh, people who have traditionally never voted or can't get out. So it, there's, and I'm, oh, my timer's not running here. I don't know.
Still have a minute fifty-three.
Um, so I might have to, to move on to the next item, but I'm, I'm really concerned, and sharing the data, that's the other concern. The federal government does not regulate the internet. So there's nothing secure on the internet, nothing. And this data, and I don't know if we did this in twenty twenty-two, who owns this data? And how long do they own it for? And and who, who gets to view that? Do we get to, and if we're sh- sharing a vendor with other municipalities in York region? You know, would Richmond Hill get to view our data? Do we own it? Is it deleted afterwards? A paper ballot doesn't link my name, as far as I know. It doesn't have my name and address on it. But an electronic ballot would, so this can become valuable in future elections for others.
You have one minute.
I will definitely be coming back. So, uh, moving on to the next item, budget timeline and process. So I'm really, um, I've been engaged to become informed about the budget process, and unfortunately, and I know we just won, won awards for, third year in a row for, um, uh, budget practices. However, um, I'm concerned about engagement and public engagement, and our, and our policy talks about, um, engaging the public, and I, I've had a hard time getting information. Um, I've, I've said, I met with you, Mr. Mayor, back on August eighth, and I, my question was, how can we lower taxes? And, um, you asked me to follow up with you in a couple of months. We had a conversation. I said, you said I can get involved, which is engaged, and I said, how do I do that? And you said, well, you really can't. So I want to improve the engagement and transparency with the budget process, um, things like Freedom of Information Act. I, I want to be, understand, um, why I'm being blocked from information and then asked to pay for it if it's free. Um, I was just a couple of weeks ago asking questions about the budgets and historical budgets, and then they mysteriously went missing. So, um, and when I asked about
Wrap up, study.
Okay.
Okay. Another one. Second or? Yep. All those in favor? Pose that carries. Go ahead, Mr. Dean.
So, okay, so the, I'm, I'm looking to be engaged in my, my emails to, to you, Mr. Mayor and Council. I want to first understand how the budget process works. I'm still in that process, and then in the attempts to, I can make suggestions and recommendations to council, but how we can lower taxes, and, and now with this, um, you know, budget funding gap, I'm really uh, concerned. Having the old historic budgets were great. Last, a couple of weeks ago, um, you announced that you would release the, uh, reserve balances for, for the last nineteen years, and having the old budgets to compare of reserve balances would be great. Right now, the public is only involved, um, in a June survey, um, about the budget, and that, the results are kept strictly confidential. It would be nice to have that shared. I would also personally like to be involved at the end of the year, um, in November and December, when the budget's being set, and um, you're making decisions what to do with, you know, recently, uh, Town Square funds. So how is there a deficit or a surplus? Where are we going to get the money? That information isn't readily available to, to the general public, and there's, um, so that, I, I, I have, uh, I, I just want some extra clarity, um, from the budget. There's, they blend the water with, uh, which is an opera, operating, uh, or pardon me, a user fee rate, but, um, you told me, Mr. Mayor, and I'm not, you know, we, we can clarify what was said, but it was a transfer, our costs to the citizens are transferred. There's no markup on water, but there is a markup on water, and we pay something like twenty million for, to York region for our water and wastewater, but we collect thirty-four million, and yet we have concerns with, uh, storm water. So there's you know, a plethora of issues that I have with the budget process, um, citizen engagement, and I want to work with council to enhance that and participate more. Um, the, also, York region portion of the budget. Um, as far as I understand it, Mr. Mayor, you're the only one that votes, um, at York region, yet there's issues there where they're obviously taking the largest portion, forty-four percent of our taxpayer dollar, and they're spending it on, um, York, you know, MetroLink's, uh, project for subways that don't directly benefit us. We have a go train. We don't need a subway. Um, we, we don't need to drive to Richmond Hill to get downtown, and yet we're paying for it, and interestingly, um, reading the York region budget, I take the time to do that, they don't even, they haven't even made, they're committed to doing it, but, and they're taking one percent from us every year for the last three years, and for something that we don't directly benefit from, and that's a real, real concern, and we don't, how do we, how do I get engaged to have a voice with that, right? And, and there's other comments with, uh, I can make another day about this, the school board as well, um, that are concerning. So I've identified all these areas, and I just want to, um, ask you, how can I be, become more engaged? The last item, and I, uh, with respect to, um, the rental regional housing. So generally speaking, we're, I, I'm, I what, what's in it for the taxpayer to give, uh, a developer, uh, an interest-free loan? Um, I don't get interest-free loans if I miss my property tax payment. We just borrowed four million dollars, um, from York region for Town Square. They're charging, and twenty years and four point six three percent. So as much as I'd love to help someone, we didn't create a housing problem in Aurora, and why, what's in it for taxpayers? What's in it for even council when the document says, you know, basically, oh, you can, you're just going to break even? Um, there's too much, too much uncertainty there. Um, and why, why don't we ask the people that are benefiting from new houses, like the, the cellphone companies and, and the internet companies? They're looking to build a, um, you know, five G radio tower here. Banks, Elektra, Enbridge, they all benefit from new houses. I don't. I can go into Town Square and, and, but I can't go into someone's house. There's just nothing in it for me, I, other than compassion. I hope you find a house, so. I, I haven't, and that, that comment applies to most of the affordable housing. We didn't create the problem. Um, we don't, we have a long-term deficit issue, and thank you for the time, and thank you for the extra time.
Thank you. Counsel, can I get a motion to proceed and refer those? Counsel Gallo, Counsel Thompson? Uh, questions for the delegate, Counsel Gallo, go ahead.
Thank you. Um, no, no real question, just a comment of, of appreciation for, um, your, your work and your time and your effort to keep us to account. I know we've had some conversations, uh, about the subjects that you've brought forward, and I encourage you to, to continue to do that, and, and um, uh, I'm, I'm here to help as well, uh, through me. If you have questions, I'm happy to, to, uh, get those answers to the extent that, that I can. It's always a good thing to have the public come and be that engaged, particularly about very boring subjects like our budget, notwithstanding the importance of them. So thank you.
Counsel Wies?
Yes, uh, thanks, Sean. Thanks for the conversations you and I have had as well. I appreciate you coming here, taking the time. Um, the specifics about, uh, the cost thing and the IT, I mean, we can certainly ask those questions and get those answers uh, for you. I agree with Counselor Gallo, and I'm sure all the others that say that we need to be as transparent as we possibly can, and get as much input as we can on our budget process, and maybe we haven't been doing that as well as we should in the past, and we'll have some discussions around that. Um, so again, just thanks for coming here, and, uh, we'll take your, uh, information under advice. Thanks.
Counsel Gallo.
Thank you through Mr. Mayor, Sean. Uh, I just want to say thank you again for coming in and delegating with your concerns. I know that you and I have had some conversations as well, and there's a lot of open ended questions, and they're very valid. And I hopefully will have a wholesome conversation today, um, about some of the items that you had, um, suggested, and, uh, I'm looking forward to asking some of those questions, and also about the internet voting as well and the data privacy. I know that that was something that was going to come up on my end, especially with the data privacy and governance, and, uh, that's an outstanding motion that I've yet to see come to fruition, so I'll be asking about that tonight. Thanks.
Yep. Any other comments, questions? Sean Verrett, thanks very much for coming this evening. Appreciate it, and as I think that everyone said, it's, it's great that you're so passionate and engaged in, in the issues that you are, and I know we've had many conversations, and I'm sure we'll continue to have many more as well. Absolutely, sir. Thank you very much. All the vote, all those in favor? Pose that carries. We are at advisory committee meeting minutes. Someone want to move? Close. Counsel Thompson, second. Counsel Wies, any comments or questions? All the, all those in favor? Pose that carries. Nothing on the consent agenda. Does anyone want, any items poll? Counsel Gallo.
Uh, thank you. Uh, nine point one. Ten point one. Uh, eleven point one. And eleven point two. I think that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any others? Counsel Wies? Me? What? Uh, fourteen one. Fourteen two. Counsel Gallo?
They're pulled.
Hmm?
They're pulled.
They're pulled. Thank you. Counsel Gardner? Thank you, Counselor Garner.
I think everything's.
I just wanted to know if we're supposed to be pulling motions. I think they all should be pulled.
Anything else? There's one item left. They have motion to approve the remaining item, six point sixteen point one. Counsel Ken, second Counsel Reese. All is in favor? Oh, is that carries? Start with nine point one. Counselor Gillan, you pulled this one. You want to move the recommendation? You secondary? Counsel Thompson, thank you. Go ahead, Counsel Gillan.
Thank you. Uh, I just had a question just about the funding criteria, and I'm, I'm glad. That the motion got it moving, uh, to include King and Stovall and the accountability. And I, I do like the idea of the new, uh, Indigenous Soldier Memorial, and it talks about if we were to get the grant. And the cost of it is fifty thousand, and if we did get the grant, it'd be an extra twenty-five thousand, so that's only be about twenty-five grand. However, I'm just curious as to why we didn't have those conversations with King or Stovall. Um, considering this full memorial site. You know, lends itself to combining all three municipalities. Why was, uh, the, uh, twenty-five grand not split within, um. Those other two municipalities?
So, welcome.
Thank you, um, through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counsel Gilland. The Indigenous Soldiers Veterans Memorial is more in line with our actions we're taking for truth and reconciliation. Um, each municipality is following their own pathway, um, for that. So there are those conversations that are happening at those individuals' municipalities for how they are going to. Acknowledge Indigenous contributions by soldiers in conflict. So the reason we don't have a centralized one in this area is because those recognitions are likely going to be more dispersed. Through the municipalities.
Thank you, uh, through you, Mr. Mayor, which could be to Michelle or Miss Wayne Van Kessel. Um, when it comes to deciding the budget, do we have a specific bucket that we utilize for this type of? Um, contribution?
Uh, through you, Mr. Mayor. So typically, uh, if we are successful in grants, the grants comes first, and then. We did have some, uh, funds that were still available in the, the War Memorial Reserve. And then this ends up being classified as a growth in new projects, so that's why that is the next source of funding that we identify for this. Other than that, we don't have any other specific sources for it.
Thank you. And if I may, is that contribution or what's left within that fund, is that being accounted for in this chart?
Uh, through you, Mr. Mayor, so the, uh, War, uh, Memorial War Reserve, yes, that's what's, uh, left available.
Okay, thank you. Uh, do we have a specific budget towards our truth and reconciliation? Um, efforts? Is there a separate budget that we have set aside for that? Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Ms. McDougall.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, thank you. Through you, Mr. Mayor, there is an annual operating budget of twenty thousand dollars, but this is to, um, handle. Day-to-day regular initiatives that we are running through the Indigenous Relations Committee, not for capital work.
Counselor.
Okay, thank you very much.
Any other comments, questions? Counsel Garner?
Thank you. Uh, I just noticed that, uh, King and Stovall are contributing exactly the same amount of money. So was there? Was, is that what we asked? How did that happen to be the exact same amount?
Yep, through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Gardner. Um, the contributions from King and Stovall were arrived at through multiple conversations with those partners. Um, we decided that it would be in line with their current mandates for us to partner on programming. So exhibitions, the commemorative ceremony, and the street banners, those were the elements that made the most sense for collaboration. Through the municipalities. So it is the total amount of all of those pieces of this collaborative project. Um, then divided by three. So the total of exhibitions, the original scope, commemorative ceremony. Street banners and divided by three for Aurora, King and Stovall.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Mayor. My apology. I might have missed you to the report, but. What is the percentage of representation in our cemetery from King and Stovall?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Gardner, and on the Senate half in terms of the names. Are you asking for what is the percentage of soldier names on the Senate half, just to clarify? Um, it is pretty equal across the three municipalities in terms of. The soldiers who are identified as residing or having a connection to each municipality. We've just completed an exercise of determining what that connection is. Um, as part of the street banner program, each soldier will be represented on a banner. Um, in each of the municipalities that they connect with. So, um, it's. The memorial itself is quite balanced, the First World War Memorial in terms of representation from those municipalities.
Counselor.
So, through you, Mr. Mayor, so we've, we've given the land to have this. And if the, if it's approximately equal from each municipality as far as representation. Uh, which would be the unfortunate number of soldiers who served, who've died and been buried here. Then why wouldn't they share the costs more accordingly to the representation? Through you, Mr. Mayor. We might have gone over this in the past, but I don't remember.
Yep, through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Gardner. Um, one of the reasons for that is that when we look at the site work and enhancements line, that includes restoration. To the memorial itself. So the masonry work, um, the bio side cleaning, fixing some of the. Incorrect spellings on the memorial, that is about half of the cost, give or take of that site work and enhancements. And we have applied for a grant for that memorial restoration. Um, the other piece in that line refers to park enhancements. So adding benches, fixing the electricity, which, um, we felt. Belongs more under the Aurora mandate if we're going to be adding the benches to the park and doing those types of, um. Capital projects for the area and our conversations with King and Stovall, that's how it kind of came about.
Thank you, uh, follow-up, I, I. I'm not in agreement that they do not share more of the costs. That's just my comment. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and, uh, th- through you to, uh, Ms. Johnson on, on table two, just to clarify. Uh, the items underneath grants, um, if we don't, uh, if we're not successful in obtaining the grants, um. Are we not going to go ahead with those particular items underneath the grants column?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Kim, um. We are intending on proceeding if council approves with all of the items except for the exhibition enhancements. So under two of the grants, we applied for enhancements to the traveling exhibition and the digital exhibition. Those enhancements totaled about forty-five thousand, four hundred dollars. If we don't receive grants for those exhibition enhancements. That line would be removed entirely. The other elements to the project, um, are being presented as we would like to. Continue on with them regardless of grant funding.
Great, thank you.
Any other comments, questions? All vote, all those in favor? Close that carries. Ten point one, Counsel Gallo, and you pulled this one. Do you want to move the recommendation? Okay, secondary. Counsel Reese, go ahead, Counsel Gillan.
Thank you, uh, through you, Mr. Mayor, to, uh, the clerk. Uh, just in light of some of the conversations that had, uh, happened, uh, with the, in respect to the delegate, and it comes to data privacy and so forth. Uh, is that some sort of information that you can provide us with now? Knowing that we don't have a secured vendor?
Uh, through you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, thank you very much for the question. I think, um, so I, there's a few different ways I'd go with this. Uh, number one, what's something that's implemented, been implemented for this coming election that we didn't have in years past. Uh, was the, is the Digital Government Standards Institute has, has created standards for internet voting, including security, that, data privacy amongst other things. So, um, it's, you know, all the vendors that, um, are on the market, and any vendor we select through the, um, RFP. Would be subject to everything that's within that document. The second one I'll point to is, uh, the agreement. Any agreement, the, any vendor that we, um, uh. Procure will have an agreement that, and that will provide the, um, where the data is housed, how long it's housed for, and what they do with it. And, uh, I can assure you that it would be, um, you know, in, in accordance with all Canadian privacy laws, nothing being sold, of course, or anything like that. Uh, then just to finish, I would, on that question, I would say that, um, you know, we, data, data privacy has never been more important. And I take it very seriously as a privacy officer, uh, for the town and, um, you know, this or any other software program that we have. Uh, it runs through legal, runs through IT, goes through some of my division, and, uh, we, we always look at these things.
Counselor.
Thank you. And I guess my question is, I don't, I don't believe I was on council when we decided to switch to internet voting. Um, and I don't know the process that was put in place by, um, the council that time to make that selection as to who. And I have heard in the last election that just occurred, some municipalities had different vendors, and they had a lot of problems with. Um, their, their online voting. I think the online voting has been great. I'm not saying it's not great, but. I'm just a little uneasy just approving something to go forward and saying, yeah, we're going to do it, and we don't even know which vendor we're going to be using. And I prefer. To have some comfort knowing, okay, these are our options with the vendors, and this is the type of program and it's going to be used. Is this something that we're comfortable with doing? And right now, I don't really see any kind of scope or any kind of request per se as to what we're looking for. As opposed to arbitrarily saying, okay, carte blanche, go ahead, we're fine with it because Richmond Hill uses it for a lack of, better example. Um, is there a way that within this procurement process that perhaps maybe council would have the opportunity to look at what those options are out there? Because there is a lot of concern with the public when it comes to data privacy, obviously, uh, Dominion. Has it Dominion was the previous vendor that we used? And, you know, it has been in the news about Dominion. I, I'm not alligating anything. It's allegedly, there were some. Things about Dominion, Dominion that people were not comfortable with, and I, I just believe that I think it would be important for us to have that opportunity to take a look at what our choices are. Is that something that council could do, or if you could just enlighten me, that'd be great.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, um, it's a bit of a chicken and the egg thing, if you will, because to be involved in the RFP, council needs to confirm that. Um, internet voting is an option, or is, is an option available to electors in the town. So, um, you know, the, the, the order of operations is generally, and this is what we've done in the last two elections, is council approves internet voting and the, and the clerks go off. And procure, um, you know, reasonable vendors, uh, to acceptable standards. Uh, having said that, I'd be happy to provide more information for the council meeting later this month about what, um, what's in the RFP, what sort of security measures, um, that we ask for. If that, um, that makes council, um, you know, feel a little bit better about, um, moving forward with this.
Thank you. I mean, I certainly would want to have a little bit more information, and I don't know if it. Um, is, is, is language changing in the fact that, yes, we agree, we like the internet voting, but, um, you know. Subject to, to council approval with the RFP if we're comfortable with that system. I, I don't know if that's a bit of a, a language thing that we need to approve, to include. But to me, I just feel like arbitrarily, um, I would feel more comfortable knowing what those choices are and what the vendors out there look like. Because I do know other municipalities had some lags and daze, um, with their system. And I, I, I want to make sure that research is done, that we're not procuring the same companies that had that lag or that, those issues.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and through you, I, I completely understand, uh, the reluctance. Um, one thing I would say is that because of the standards, the Digital Governance Institute standards, I expect that all the submissions will be the same. But so, um, you know, we'd really be, it's, that, that security, because it's now regulated, will be, uh, consistently across the board with vendors. Versus, and we'll be looking for, you know, it'll come down to price and, um, Canadian companies and things like that, that we'd be deciding, because all this, we expect all the security to be the same.
Thank you. Uh, my other colleagues have a few words to say, so I'm going to wait and hear what they have to say. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, uh, and just following up on one of the delegates, uh, uh, questions. Seems there's maybe a little bit of a communications gap, and maybe through you, Mayor, to the, uh, clerk, is there a? A method that we can up our game with respect to communication around security? How, why not to worry about so that we have, um, our, uh, the electorate are there? And they're very comfortable and, and knowing that they have options, that those options are safe.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, absolutely. That's something we can definitely work with communications to do. Um, and I would even take it, um, one step further, the, the delegate mentioned, um, you know. That what happens when someone votes for their household, and that, um, that's voter fraud, that's a crime. And so just making people more aware of. Voter fraud and what it is and what the, what the penalties for doing so are, is something we'd be happy to work with communications on.
Thanks. I think everybody needs to know we have the security and safety, uh, uh, on our elections and that it's accurate. We don't want anything happening that has happened in other jurisdictions perhaps, so, thank you.
Thank you, uh, through you, Mr. Mayor, could you go through, um. It says in the report that you're not recommending, um, internet voting on, on election day. Um, could you go through the rationale? Through, um, why, and are there other municipalities that do? Um, allow for electronic voting on election day?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, yeah, happy to do that. Um, so there's a few different things. We, um, as I mentioned in the report, we have about twenty voting locations. Um, you know, school gyms is very popular, and it's just difficult to have reliable internet at school gyms. And what we really need is reliable, fast internet to run an internet, an internet and paper ballot election simultaneously. So it's, it's the logistical challenge, um, that our, that I would face, our IT, um, division would face too. And just making that happen over twenty locations across the town, um, and, you know, throughout the day too, because then. One location goes down, you have to extend voting, it's, um, it gets a little, a little messy towards the end. Um. And then, another one, again, I'm a bit out of my depth in, um, in, uh, sort of this, this point of security, but just more internet connections is a bit of more of a risk. Whenever you have a connection to the internet, my understanding is that you're just, you kind of, you open yourself up for, for an issue. And so by, by limiting that to just the senior center and the advanced vote, um, we, uh, lower our risk exposure.
But correct me if I'm wrong, people can vote from home prior to election day. Pre-voting electronically can be done from home. Have we explored the same thing on election day? Not, not for them to come to a particular location, but voting from home like they did. Um, prior to election day. And if you know of any other municipalities that, that are doing this.
Uh, through you, Mr. Mayor, apologies, I didn't answer that part of your question the first time. Uh, other municipalities do, do voting on election day, but those, it's generally, the municipalities that do are. Don't have, or are paper ballot by, by request. Um, and that's more of a, and, and, and internet only, I think, is, is more popular to do through election day, of course. Uh, and just to, um, maybe I'll, I'll try and make myself more clear, the, um. With, if you're going to allow internet voting, and like, we would expect people to vote from home, we wouldn't really, we might have a station or two at every polling list, polling location. So if someone showed up and said, I, I don't mind voting online, we, we could put them on a computer, but we, we would still, we still need the internet at the polling location. So let's say someone's out in their car, they vote online, and we need to remove them off the live list. So that the, um, the laptops are in the voting location, need to have that name removed while that person's coming in to try and vote again. I hope I'm explaining it a bit better.
You, you are, but that is identical to pre-voting because you get your cards, you can, I can, I can vote online. And run to the senior center and vote. That live data is, is happening before or on election day, that the system should be. Identical, it should be immediate. Once someone votes online, their name is removed from the list, they can't go to a voting, uh, just like pre. Um, so I, I mean, I'm just throwing that out there, that we're always trying to engage the public and making it easier for them to, to, to be able to, to vote and, and. I think that should be explored if, if, uh, if we can get past any security issues, um, we should, we should consider that. Um, this might be outside the realm of the thing. You can call me out of order, Mr. Mayor, if you want, if you'd like. Um, I just, I know, obviously haven't been through many, many elections, that after the, um, pre-election. We all get, uh, um, a database, a list of everyone that's, that's voted. Um, and I recall asking last time, how come that doesn't happen? Um, and it and it may be deemed as a an advantage for an incumbent, but um, after the election day, that data is not available to to us. Is there a rationale behind that?
The three, Mr. Mayor, the main reason for that is because our, um, our election workers on election day, as we don't have internet voting, they're using paper lists and so and they're going through, um, with a ruler and crossing names off like that manually. And it's that we just don't have the resources to compile all the names throughout the town. We're talking yeah, seven, eight, six, seven thousand people that vote on election day, um, using paper ballots. So we'd have to go through them, put them in the wards and and sit and figure out who has voted, who versus who hasn't. It it is on, um, for my debrief, I was looking at my debrief this morning, that, um, the debrief from twenty twenty-two, that is, that, uh, this was a sticky point for for a few different people and I'm trying to figure out how we can get that data to, um, members of council and uh, other candidates. Having said that, the, um, there is destruction rules with the election. Ninety days after the election, all data must be destroyed, which would include, um, I mean, we would send out a, an email to candidates and members of councils, including those lists.
Thank you. It'd be good to to understand that after the election. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My questions have been answered.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions, Council Thompson?
Thank you. Um, just as a suggestion to the clerk, perhaps, uh, in advance of, uh, our council meeting at the end of the month. To the best of my knowledge, I believe AMO keeps track of the number of municipalities that used internet voting in the last election. And so, uh, maybe it's valid information to recirculate, especially if we're talking about the security question, both in terms of the fact that, you know, we've used it the last two elections. Maybe if there's been any issues, you can identify them, but, you know, we know Markham's using it since two thousand and two. But I know that there's a growing list of the number of municipalities that are using it. I would expect even more would use it over twenty, uh, in the next election as well. But perhaps that's some good background information for members of council and for the public to know that it's becoming more commonplace for municipalities to use internet voting. And how, you know, what percentage are are moving in that direction or or at least did institute it the last time around? And, you know, I mean, I'm sure you have conversations with your colleagues in other municipalities. You know, what, you know, the the questions around security are are valid, but perhaps there's some other information you can provide to give the public assurances that, um, everything that can reasonably be done is being done to protect the integrity of the data.
Counselor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, uh, through you to, uh, the clerk. Um, given, given the question raised about, uh, uh, the type of vendors and who would be, uh, putting in their, uh, their applications, uh, when we when we tender this out. And you talked about the chicken and the egg. Um, I agree with you, this is the process that we we underwent the last, uh, couple of, uh, terms and I have no problem with it. Uh, would it be, uh, out of the ordinary to perhaps, uh, by council meeting to provide, uh, some of the top uh, election, you know, providers and, uh, you know, just some little things about them, or is that something that shouldn't be published or information provided until it actually comes to comes to council for decision?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, um, as we enter into procurement process, I'm slightly nervous about prejudicing it with, um, vendors. I couldn't possibly, um, you know, include all of them. That doesn't seem fair to me, so I'd be reluctant to do that.
That's a good point. I agree. Thank you.
Any other comments, questions?
Thank you, uh, through Mr. Mayor, the clerk or Mr. Sario. Uh, if we did want to have more information, you know, come council, obviously, we're going to do some work between now and and the council. And we wanted to have a little bit more information about the vendors, not saying that we're choosing them, but a bit more information. Would this be maybe something appropriate for us to at least review in closed session, just given the fact that there is a security and data privacy that's surrounding that? Is that something that we could do?
Uh, through you, Mr. Mayor, I don't want to rule it out. I I'm struggling with the exemption right now and then how we would just frame that into closed session. It doesn't, um, it's not historically something we would do, but, um, I can, I can think about it between now and then.
Any other comments, questions? Call the vote, all those in favor. Close that carries. Yep. We'll deal, if someone would pull out and deal with it, counsel. Eleven point one, Council Gillan, you pulled this one as well. Do you want to move the recommendation?
Uh, yes, please.
Good, secundar. Ms. Cam, go ahead, Council Gillan.
Thank you. Let me just wanna pull up the page. Uh, through Mr. Mayor to Mr. Sario, uh, looking at page. I'm saying forty-two of my page, but it might not be forty-two of your page. It's in the infrastructure and service desk chart. Uh, there's a a section there that says phase one town hall data center monitoring systems not started yet. And I'm just, uh, curious as to, uh, the type of progress that this area is in. I would suggest if it's fair to say that this would fall in line with my motion about governance and data privacy and, uh, third, uh, party data, uh, that I had, um, written some time ago with, uh, staff to investigate, uh, enhancing the privacy technologies. And I'm just curious as to, uh, why haven't we haven't received any information on that and where we where we are with it. I'm just, uh, to just to kind of like remind you, it's, uh, therefore be resolved, staff report back to council with the feasibility ability of developing a digital governance framework such as digital data charter centered on human rights and privacy enhancing technologies to ensure the ethical and responsible collection, management and use of data focusing on privacy rights, transparency and consent. And that staff report back to council for direction prior to investigating, installing or integrating any technology that collects or retains personal data, including images, recordings and third-party stakeholders.
Uh, through you, Mr. Mayor, so this isn't actually in public places. This relates us to our data centers, which are housed in the GOC and inside town hall in staff areas.
Thank you. Okay, so I guess my question is, do we know where that motion lies since this was a while ago then? Uh, we are talking about data privacy and how it's being handled. And I feel this is maybe one of those things that falls under that bucket. And I think this would be an appropriate time to maybe ask for a status update.
Thank you through you, Mr. Mayor. Um, so staff have been reviewing it and, um, actually recently today, we have been looking at the pending list to see what is outstanding. Um, there has been a bit of a pause on this as we were trying to sort things out. Um, but there have been discussions on if whether we can renew renew the discussions to continue to to see if we can bring back a report on the issue.
Thank you. Do we have an ETA? My, and I am only, I'm only pushing this because I felt that when I brought the motion forward, it was also important because at the time when we're starting to evolve with new technologies and new capital projects and and so forth, that this particular, um, um, governance policy would fall in line with these new projects, but yet if we keep waiting and waiting and waiting, it doesn't, uh, these new capital projects don't fall in line or have to follow this new policy. So could you give us an ETA on this, please?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, we can work on having it done this year. Um, part of what we were waiting for was the bill one ninety-four to come into effect. And that has now just come, that came into effect, what was received royal assent last year, but a lot of the clause, a lot of the sections became into effect in January of this year. And where there are some regulations that we're still waiting for. So now that we've been made aware, because we were just made aware a couple of weeks ago that the the proclamation date of January had occurred, uh, we did start looking into it. So we will do our best to have this done by the end of the year.
Thank you. Uh, and my second question, uh, was on that same chart. And I figured it's page twelve of viewer report. The outdoor wifi in progress on hold and for some reason, from my recollection, that is something that council had voted not to move forward with. So I'm just curious as to why it's considered on hold when I, my rec, to my recollection, the majority of council was not in favor of moving forward with, um, public wifi in parks.
Uh, through you, Mr. Mayor. So at this point, the the project is on hold, nothing's happening with it. Um, in case council decides to move forward with it, we can, uh, but at this, at this point, we're just holding fast.
Thank you. So it's just showing as a dormant component. So even even though the council, the majority council said this is not something we're interested in, it just sits there as a pending, like I, I just want to understand, like, in the future, people might think, oh, why is this on hold? Let's move forward. Well, it's not moving forward because the majority council said, no, I'm just curious, it's just, um, communication wise, it doesn't appear that way.
Uh, through you, Mr. Mayor. So this is just a report back on the I, the technology strategic plan. So as far as the strategic plan was, uh, concerned, it is on hold. We are going to be working on the next strategic plan and then we can evaluate whether it goes into that plan or not.
Thank you. Okay, well, I guess my comment would be is that in the comment section, it should state that council was not in favor of the majority for whatever reason. So at least that's clear because right now it does not say that. So is that something that we could change?
Uh, through you, Mr. Mayor, we can make that note on there and we will take that into consideration when we do the next plan.
Thank you.
Any other comments, questions? Call the vote, those in favor. Close that carries, eleven point two, Council Gillan, you pulled this one, would you like to move the recommendation?
Yes, please.
Secundar. Council Bernard, go ahead, Council Gillan.
Thank you. Uh, ultimately I pulled this because we have a delegate here who had spoken about this item in specific and, uh, wanted to know a little bit more about the public engagement process. Um, through Mr. Mayor to Ms. Wayne Van Kessel, or is there any other opportunities for the public to get engaged? Um, beyond the budget timeline that's been suggested? And as far as the information that is available to the public, is there a way that we could make it a little bit more streamlined, more available than it currently is?
Uh, through you, Mr. Mayor. So the public engagement that we're doing right now is mostly via online tools. So we do have a survey that we issue and we also have an engagement website. And we work with our communications team in, uh, generating that engagement. We also do advertise, um, including road signs to make sure people are aware that we are seeking out the information from the public to gather. Um, the public can also reach out to members of council if there are items that they want to bring forward. So for your consideration as well, if there are things they want to bring forward, uh, to contribute to the budget. And as far as the budget information, we do have the budgets posted up until the beginning of the previous term, so that's starting in twenty nineteen. The older budgets had been removed and part of the challenge with the older budgets is, one of them is they are not AODA compliant. And we do have requirements for the content on our website to be AODA compliant. So for us to add them back, we would need to spend money to actually get them remediated. Some of them, um, are very old photocopies of just binders that we happened to have had kicking around at the time. And the other challenge we have is, um, a lot of these budgets happened before I started. And I know when I first came to the town, I knew one of the biggest challenges I was going to have is basically revamping the budget process because I found those budget documents difficult to follow and understand. And I think we've come a long way since then. And we've also changed a lot of our budget practices since then. We are doing multi-year budgeting. We are more clear in what we're asking for and we try to put everything in a content and format which can easily be understood by the public and members of council.
Thank you, uh, through you, Ms. Wayne Brinkus, to to Ms. Wayne Brinkus. Um, you had mentioned that, um, we're not AODA compliant with some of the older budgets. Is there, um, a way that we could put a disclaimer on there that, you know, in this particular format, that's original? Um, you know, you put your disclaimer that we're working on it as opposed to just arbitrarily removing it entirely, but just at least have a disclaimer there. And if they would wanted it, um, in a paper format that they could request it. But for people who wanted to do, uh, access it, access this as a soft copy that they could. Uh, I guess, um, Mr. Sario, I I gather.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, um, we can certainly do that and I, we, it's my understanding that we already do do that. So I'm not sure if we do that with the budget or if just there's other, um, items that are on or other documents, like maybe the planning reports that are on uh, the internet that we say that, but we definitely can do that.
Thank you. I I appreciate that. I think, Ms. Wayne Brinkus, so you said we took those down. Um, but we can now put those back up with a disclaimer. Is that correct?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, sorry, I didn't necessarily mean that. I meant that we could provide paper copies if they asked, like instead of putting it on the internet, that we just put a disclaimer that says if somebody would like a paper copy that they can get it to to us from the town.
Thank you. Um, sorry, miscommunication here. Uh, what I'm suggesting is if there was an online soft copy for those who would like to be able to access it, who don't require the AODA, um, uh, component to it, but having a disclaimer there that for someone who would like to get it as a hard copy because of it were non-compliant. So I'm just asking if we can have both versions versus putting the general public through the process of asking for paper copies. It is an egregious amount of paper. Obviously, I would prefer to be giving this information digitally if someone were to ask if we're capable of doing it. Is that something that we can do? Is it in our purview? Can we provide this digitally just with a disclaimer to suggest that we do also have it in paper?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, I will look into that.
I appreciate it. Thank you. Uh, also through Mr. Mayor, Ms. Wayne Brinkus, there were some comments about survey results. Um, if you could shed some light on some of those, that those comments, that would be great.
Uh, through you, Mr. Mayor. So we do try to provide a summary of overall of what is in the survey to members of council. I will say there is content that is provided there, particularly in the comments, which is not appropriate, especially for providing in a public sphere. I don't think it's fair to members of council and some town staff, some of the comments that we do get in those surveys. So we try to provide, um, the relevant information, uh, back to council.
Thank you. I I appreciate that. Um, I will leave it to my other colleagues now. Thank you.
Um, yes, thanks. Um, the, um, I have a couple of questions here. Um, the first one has to do with the table on, uh, page four of six. And going through this, um, last year, uh, with the strong mayor powers, uh, I guess my question is to maybe the clerk. Um, is this schedule that here legislated or is this schedule something that um, we have looked at, we've approved and we think this is the right direction to go through to Mrs. Wayne, right, Van Kessel, thank you.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. So under the strong mayor powers, um, there is certain timeframes that are required. So once the mayor releases the budget, council has thirty days to provide the, to, uh, make amendments to that budget. So this timeline aligns with making sure that the thirty days is there and available up to the thirty-day, uh, time limit. Then we also are looking then at the next stage under the legislation is ten days for the mayor to veto any of those amendments. And then following that is up to fifteen days if we want to do an overturn vote for on those vetoes. So this schedule aligns with that ha, being able to take place. Now we know in actual fact, um, the mayor may choose to veto early or we may be able to hold meetings earlier. It depends on how it goes and we just have to be fluid as we go through the process.
So if I can just unpack that, it's, uh, whenever the mayor gives the, uh, budget, then we have a a certain window of time for a variety of things to happen that's here, uh, including the whole veto and, uh, that problem. Okay, thank you. But I find, I find it tight. There's a lot of, uh, information that has to go in there at a very, uh, short period of time. Um, the, um, I'm just going to address something that I read and then I read something I thought was contrary to it. Um, it says here, uh, in the, uh, third bullet of the executive summary that the town's long-term capital asset management funding gap will need to be addressed in the next term of council. Uh, can you explain why we need to address a funding gap in the next term of council and not include it into this budget? It just seems that it it should be at least recognized and and worked on through you, Mayor, to, uh, Wayne Van Kessel.
Uh, through you, Mr. Mayor. So back in September, we came forward with a financial strategy to meet our obligations in this term of council. So we've got the plan in place for the twenty-five budget and the twenty-six budget to meet those financial obligations for the asset management plan. But then, once we get into twenty twenty-seven and beyond, we haven't defined what that's going to be yet. And that's what we'll need to look at. And that's what we'll need to look at going forward.
Council.
Okay, that's fine. Uh, but then in the conclusions, it says, um, the potential tariff driven and other inflationary pressures as well as capital asset management pressures amongst others will be included here. So was that just a, is my, is a misunderstanding on my, uh, part because you say we're going to address it in next term and then you say we're going to address it here. Does there something incorrect about that through you to Ms. Wayne?
Ms. Wayne Van Kessel.
Uh, through you, Mr. Mayor. So as you know, it's, it's a very big balancing act. We're dealing with a lot. Uh, we've got inflation, we've got potential impacts of tariffs. On good news, we might have some savings on the carbon tax. So that helps us a little bit. But it's going to be interesting, interesting as we go through the development of the budget and it's balancing some of those needs. And it's balancing some of those needs from a growth and an asset management perspective when it comes to the capital budget. Meanwhile, also looking at what our reserve needs are ensuring we have a balanced reserve picture over that 10 year timeframe. So that we have the funds to, uh, build what we need to, when we need to. So it, those are some of the things that are kicking out there as potential risks. Um, what will actually manifest and how we'll be able to offset those, those are part of the process of pulling that together, that budget.
Okay. That's good. Thank you. Um, and the other thing that I just wanted to bring up, because I have people have been asking me about the whole budgeting process because we went to something new last year and we're going to carry on with it this year. Is there really is no council approval of the budget? The budget is the mayor's budget. And it comes back to us through this table of where we can involve ourselves. We can bring information from the public, um, to the attention of the mayor through his budget. And then we have an opportunity, if we don't like something, to make an amendment. Um, and he has a right to veto if that's the case, but there's really no approval date for the budget through council. Is that correct through you to Ms. Wayne Wright Van Kessel?
That's correct. Um, Councilor, if, um, once, once we hit the timelines, if there have been no amendments or if there are amendments, uh, if there are no vetoes, uh, then the budget is deemed, uh, adopted at the end of that.
Thanks. That's my understanding. At least the public isn't quite aware of all that. Thank you. No, nothing further.
Thank you. Councilor Gardner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you, uh, to Ms. Wayne Van Kessel. Um, the, um, departmental operating budget presentations as well as proposed capital plan review. That's all happening on one day. And I see that we do have, um, so, some time put aside on the day that the community partners present. Uh, but I'm wondering if that is not enough time. Is there anywhere in the budget where we can take some extra time to finish? I mean, that's, that's a lot of presentations to do in two days.
Ms. Mary Van Kessel.
Uh, through you, Mr. Mayor. So this speaks to the timing of when we're actually meeting in chambers to go through the budget information. I do encourage council to work, uh, with myself and the other directors to ask questions about their budgets and capital and capital projects to get the information that you need so that we, when we get to that stage where we're having that amendment meeting, you have the information that you need to know if you, whether you'd like to make an amendment to the budget, whether it be an operating item or a capital item. So this is only about those public meetings. I do encourage everyone to have those conversations with the directors about their specific budgets.
Council.
Thank you. I do think that, uh, we get the budgets October 20th and departmental budgets are November 3rd. It's, it's a lot for us to go through, get feedback from residents. Uh, it's like, it's two weeks. So it's, uh, to me, it's, I know it's the mayor's budget, but it's still a lot to go through and, uh, there are some residents who are actually quite interested in budget. Um, so I, I object to that, that tightness there. That's, is there a reason? I guess the last council meeting is December 14th. Um, is there a way to put it, to give us some more time there?
Ms. Wayne Van Kessel, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, too, is I think, believe before strong mayor powers. This is the, this is going to be the third budget that we've done under, under SMP. Uh, previously to that, essentially it was the same timeline. We started around
Seven weeks.
mid-October to late October and we finished December before we broke for the holidays. So we, we did it around the same, same timeline. Ms. Wayne Van Kessel.
Uh, through you, Mr. Mayor. So the, the challenge is we are working with the timelines of strong mayor powers. So we cannot go beyond that 30 day period for council having no opportunity to make amendments to the budget. Right now, the last meeting that we've got planned in the schedule is at that 28 day mark. So it's a kind of as late as we can get without, uh, keep, with keeping that the nights on a consistent basis, uh, that we have these meetings. That's why in between, it's really important to have those conversations and have conversations with the directors and get that additional information you need, whether it's be in this room or with meetings individually.
Senator.
Thank you. Follow up. That's two weeks with two. I don't have my calendar for me. Two weeks with two weekends in between. Um, and, uh, this, this budget process was a lot longer, uh, before you became, well, it was during your term, Mr. Mayor. And I think it was before strong mayor powers, but, uh, the budgets in the past, and there was quite a change. And maybe it's you, Ms. Wayne Van Kessel, the timeline has been really tightened up. Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Ms. Wayne.
Ms. Mary Van Kessel.
Uh, through you, Mr. Mayor. So I know in the past, I think this is before I started here, the operating and capital budgets and water budgets were all considered separate items. Um, as you know, we pull the budgets together as one cohesive budget now. And the reason being is there's so much integration between those pieces. To make sure that we have the adequate reserve projections, we need both the o, operating and the capital to come together because it, it is very integrated and doing those parts separately can be challenging. I, I think by doing this analysis and pulling it together as one complete package, yes, it does tighten things up because you're looking at operating and capital together, but you're making much more informed decisions as you move forward as well.
Just to see if you have.
Follow.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I'll just add that the other change over that longer period of time was the creation of the FAC committee. And it was agreed, uh, the mandate of that committee was to do that detail work through the course of the term, like the, the true line by line was that at that level. Uh, so that, so that council didn't have to try to do a line by line for the entire budget, uh, during the budget process. So that was another part of the overall change.
Council.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. And I absolutely agree with you because it always used to be a question during the capital budget, how much is that going to cost to operate? So, uh, I think it's prudent and the best way to go is to look at those together. But we're still looking at the same amount of information with a compressed timeline. Anyway, I, I feel that it is too compressed. Um, is it possible to get the budget to us earlier than October 12th or is that too difficult for staff?
Uh, and Ms. Wayne Van Kessel, correct me if I'm wrong, but once I presented to council, the, the, the time starts ticking, counselor. Once I present it, once I give council the, the binders, the 30 days kicks in.
And, and you personally have to give us the binders? We can't have them to look at before then?
Um, I mean, I would suggest, uh, uh, previous to the, the binders coming out, and I think I've sent out an email as well. And I know staff have made it clear that they're available, uh, have conversations with staff, uh, our CIO as well as me. We're all available to have those conversations about what is, uh, uh, you know, what is needed and some of the things that you're looking for within your wards. And we'll, uh, we'll do our best to explain some of the things that we're looking at moving forward with, um, that could be, uh, included into the, uh, 2026 budget.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I can see I'm not going to win this one, so I'll just stop talking.
Councilor Ken.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I just want to clarify, uh, a point that was made earlier. Um, when, uh, Director, uh, Ms. Wayne Wright Van Kessel talked about, um, uh, you know, when she came in, she made a lot of changes in terms of, um, our past, uh, budget documents. And it was mentioned, uh, about transparency and availability. Um, I don't want to assume that everyone knows what AOD is or, or those who are listening. But AODA is, you know, Accessibility to Frontiers and Disabilities Act, which requires on, um, Ontario to have accessibility standards in place by 2025, including municipalities. And certainly, uh, we've done that far, uh, before the, uh, the recommended data of 2025. So I just want to commend Ms. Wayne Wright Van Kessel and, and the team for getting, uh, the accessibility challenged old documents into the current digital format is now so that it is readily available for everyone. So I just want to make that clear that, uh, whether it can't be found or the issue about transparency, it's just that it was in a different format. So AODA is not like we were not, um, GAAP accounting standards, non-compliant. It's just means AODA in terms of, uh, accessibility. So I just want to clarify that. Thank you.
Do. Any other comments, questions for the first time? Councilwoman, go ahead, second time.
Thank you. Uh, through you, Mr. Mayor, Ms. Wayne Wright Van Kessel. Does the FAC have, um, a first look at the budget prior to the release of the binder to the rest of council?
Ms. Mary Van Kessel, I see you shaking your head no.
Uh, through you, Mr. Mayor, FAC does not get a prior look. Um, the only one who gets to see the budget early is the mayor since it is his budget.
Awesome.
Thank you. I just wanted to clarify that and that within the FAC, it's more generalized across all finance and it is comprised of, um, three members, uh, two members, two council members and the mayor. So, um, obviously the rest of us who are not on that committee have to do the extra work, um, to do our own due diligence. So it's just not an automatic swipe of, um, everything's okay by three members of council or, or so forth. So I wanted to make that clear. And then just for the public and obviously Councilor Reese, um, I, I do want to suggest that, you know, the very first term of council with budget, it was a little bit different. And I do miss the open dialogue that we did have about budget and being able to open up the binder and have a fulsome discussion, um, on line by line items and decide there on the spot, whether we want to pause, hold or not go forward. And I think the difference between this budget and the new strong mayor power, mayor's budget is the process in which council has to endure, which is doing that research behind the scenes, not out in public and making sure that you're, you're submitting a formal motion to amend. It's a huge process to go through in order to make sure that what you're amending is how you want it to be perceived and how you want to present as a debate. Whereas before we would have some wholesome conversation around the table and perhaps, um, you know, there would have been an item that, you know, I hadn't really, um, had thought that had some concern, but counselor, for example, Councilwoman may have brought something up and I'd agree, or maybe I'd disagree. And I, I found that we were able to get through that binder a lot more quickly, a lot more efficiently. But I feel that this process does take a lot of that work offline, behind the scenes where the public doesn't see. And I certainly feel that these amendments can come across as more combative versus an open discussion. And I just don't like the way it's presented. I do feel it's a lot more work. And I do think it is, it does tighten it up and especially when it is all together. Um, it is, is a little confusing. And I also want to, uh, mention that when we first went through our very first budget, there was plenty of counselors around this table. Uh, I won't speak for them, but I do recall we were rather confused about the process and did not bring up some questions that we had had because we were unsure of that process. So this has been a learning process for all of us. So I just don't think it's fair to put it all in one basket to say we've been doing this as our third budget because we're still learning. And I know that other municipalities were actually looking to reward because we were one of the first ones to go through it for the very first time because they also felt that they were, uh, unsure how to go through things. So yes, this is the third one. We have an idea of what we're doing now, but it is a very tight timeline and it's a lot behind the scenes. So when you say two weeks, uh, you have to remember as counselors, we still have to read all the information, do the research, talk to the directors, get all the information in behind the scenes, questions, answers, back and forth. And then decide to write this motion to get on agenda. So it's not that simple. I just wanted to put that out there so the public can understand it is different. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? Just did want to clarify one thing, uh, for finance advisory committee, all council members are allowed to participate. You can all request the packages that, that the three members do get. Um, it's just the voting that is the three members. So I'll call the vote. All those in favor? Close that carries, I'm going to go to 11.3. Councilor Reese, you pulled this one. Did you want to move the recommendation?
Thank you.
Thank you. Secondary. Councilor Gallagher, thank you. Go ahead, Councilor Reese.
Yeah, there's a number of, uh, this has been a very interesting week, uh, talking about this because, uh, of course, affordable housing and housing and rentals and purpose-built is very important. So had a lot of conversations with various people and, um, I just want to bring some of this, uh, to our attention and ask a couple of questions. Uh, first of all, um, I don't see anywhere in this document what the actual cost to the town is for the deferral. And before we go any further, I wanted to just clarify also that the, we're talking about two different applications here, the Bursey Street application and a different one, which is a Metcalf one. And you say that there was a, um, a, a proposal to change it to a 50% of the DC down and then 50% amortized over the, the number of years. Um, that has been rescinded? Is it no longer on the table? Uh, I just want to clear it off if it's, if it's not on the tables through you, uh, Mayor to Ms. Wayne Wright Van Kessel.
Ms. Wayne Van Kessel.
Uh, through you, Mr. Mayor. So we confirmed with the region, if that proposal looks, was accepted, it would not meet the criteria for their 20 year deferral.
Great. So that's, thank you. That's off the table then. So we're talking about the original, um, report that had a hundred percent of these, um, DCs being deferred over the period. So I haven't seen yet the cost of that deferral to the town. Could you elaborate on that for us? So that if we were to approve this and if we were to, uh, well, the entire report and, uh, accept this or approve it, what would be the actual cost over the amortization period, uh, to the town? Through you to our treasurer. Thank you.
Ms. Mary Van Kessel.
Uh, through you, Mr. Mayor. So if we were to approve this and move forward, um, instead of receiving the DCs upfront like we currently do under most applications, it would be the delay in receiving the funds. So it's a time value of money cost that would be associated with it. That would impact the timing of when we would do, uh, various capital projects. It would impact our reserve, um, analysis for development charges. And if we wanted to move ahead some projects sooner, there may be some debt that would have to be issued at the prevailing rate that we could get from infrastructure Ontario at that time. However, if we decided not to move forward with this, there's very much a risk of the, the projects would not move forward and we would not receive the DCs at all.
Council.
Thank you, but it still didn't answer my question about what, if it was to go through and we were to defer these DCs, what would be the cost perhaps of, uh, taking money out of our reserves? What, what is the actual cost at the end of the day? For the approval of this, because I think all of our taxpayers and everyone would like to know that if we're going to go forward with this, and and I'm not suggesting we shouldn't because we are all interested in, uh, providing purpose-built rentals as well as, um, affordable housing options for people. But in order for us to fund this, the way that it's been proposed, uh, I think we need to know what the, uh, actual cost is to us over the period of amortization. Can you help us with that through you, Mayor?
Ms. Mary Van Kessel.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, and just looking at the amount from the previous report, but there, part of this is, and this is applicable as to whether this deferral happens or not. And this is the component that would have to be replaced with either tax or water rate, um, sources. And that's the discounts that happen on, um, multi-residential and that's legislated per, per the DC act. So regardless of what we decide here, these exemptions that come along through the DC act, those would actually have to be replaced because they're exempt DCs. As far as the, um, the time value of money costs, like the, the pro, the, the project would still be funded from the development charges. What you're losing out is those dollars in the future are not worth as much as they are today. So it's a matter of, are we still going to be able to afford to build as much? But it's not drawing the money from the tax or water immediately. It would be funding decisions that would have to be made at the point in time when the capital moves forward.
Council.
Okay, um, see, I want to, to have this go forward because I want us to make a, uh, a dent in the purpose-built rentals. Um, and that's of course the rationale for the, for the region to do this on their side. I'm just having difficulty when we're being asked to approve something without knowing the cost. But what you're suggesting, if I can unpack that for you and what I heard, is that Is that this is coming out of reserves anyway. And it's a matter of replacing those reserves or not using those reserves or something else. That's a risk that we take in in doing this. If we approve this tonight through you, mayor.
Swear I think us.
Uh through you, Mr. Mayor. So yes, it's a matter of the timing of capital and when it would come compared to what we would be able to do otherwise if the D Cs were received upfront. But really, the 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 tax and water is the in the report from February identified that there's three point five million in development charge savings. That are legislated. Those are exemptions that we would have to replace those D Cs. And that's regardless of this deferral happens or not. This is just part of the D C Act.
Okay, thank you. Um and this next question probably through to uh Mr. Ramuno. Um the calculation of the uh affordability and the number of units that are in this proposal. In the one Bursey, I believe it was twenty nine percent of the units that were going to be identified as as being calculated as being affordable. And for the Metcalf one was twenty three, which coincidentally um comes up to twenty five percent. If you aggregate them over over the both both of them. Is that a number that? You have asked them for in order to achieve our O P? Or is it something that they have come forward to? I'm just interested in the the coincidence of twenty five percent because it's in our O P through you to. To Mr. Ramuno.
Mr. Ramuno.
Certainly through you, Mr. Mayor. Uh so first off, um based on the regional program of the hundred seventy five percent. Threat threshold of average uh market rent, uh both proposals um achieve that number, meet that number. And so we did ask both uh uh both owners to submit uh their proposed rates if they were going to move forward today. And so those rates based on their unit breakdown are what they feel uh they would go to market with. And based on our calculation and the number of and and the regional program really requires the applicant in order to align with their program to. Uh achieve the uh their hundred seventy five percent threshold for one bedrooms and two bedrooms. So. I think you're correct, just based on the uh under table four, the Bursey Street application. Um thirty six percent of all one bedrooms are under. Meet the town of Aurora affordability threshold, which is uh one twenty five, a hundred twenty five percent. Um and um in twenty and twenty nine percent of all their units being the. Uh one bedroom and two bedrooms. The other proposal, Metcalf. Um they're a little higher, forty five percent of their one bedrooms meet our affordability target, but. Generally, based on the one and two bedroom units, they're at twenty three percent. So in my opinion, uh these two proposals. Go along rate to in achieving our affordability targets is set out in our uh in our official plan.
Counsel.
Yeah, thank you. Um. The other question that has arisen is that, and I certainly don't want anybody to take this, that I'm not interested in affordable housing or rentals or the rest of it, but the. The proposal, as I see it, is that we are asking. They are asking for a D C um deferral on all of the units and all the construction. When in fact, only on average twenty five percent of them are actually affordable. So is would there be any possibility that we can negotiate with uh either or both of them? That we would um only allow D C deferrals on those units. That were actually deemed as affordable, so it doesn't look like we're providing an opportunity for the other seventy five percent. So that we're giving a D C reduction or a D C deferral on the seventy five percent to that developer. Through you, mayor, to probably.
Mr. Ramuno.
Mr. Ramuno, maybe it's uh. Our treasurer.
Uh through you, Mr. Mayor. So uh for that to work, for that to happen, they would no longer be eligible for the deferral through the region and the region's policy for their twenty year deferral.
Counsel.
Okay, that's it for me for now. Thank you. Let my other colleagues say.
Any other comments, questions? Let's go.
Thank you. I just wanted some clarity on table three and table four in terms of. What we're determining and even the the previous tables. Are we obligated to take the three Mr. Mayor, the hundred and twenty fifth percent of the affordable average rents? Or the hundred and seventy five percent of the average uh affordable rents?
Swear I think us.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, for the region's policy to apply, it must meet the hundred and seventy five as the maximum.
Counsel.
Okay, so. There's a lot of tables here with a lot of different numbers that range significantly. Um. But if we take, if we take an average, let's say for mostly an average one bedroom at the hundred and seventy five A M R. It's two thousand eight hundred and eighteen dollars a month. I guess. What I was trying to calculate is, you know, there's definitely going to be a cost to the taxpayers if we go into this. We yet to understand exactly what that number is. Um but there's definitely going to be a cost if we're deferring. Development charges interest free. Um, you know, logically, there's going to be a cost to the taxpayers because we're not, we're not. Um getting those development charges upfront. But if we look at twenty eight hundred dollar rent per month. And we look at um. The whole purpose of this is to try to, well, we're trying to build purpose built rental. Uh and the purpose of that is because we find that the average person is having difficulty. There's a whole percentage of people that are having difficulty purchasing. Um. But that that gap between the cost of a home and rent has shrunken so much. Because if someone is paying twenty eight hundred dollars for rent. They can afford a mortgage of four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. They can buy a studio apartment in the town of Aurora. For that kind of money and putting ten fifteen percent down. And that's homeownership. That gap is closed significantly. So at the end of the day, we have to ask ourselves, why are we putting taxpayer funds towards these types of projects? Um when the person that would be utilizing this could go and be a homeowner. We have to have that discussion, that that clear discussion amongst us. And and if it was me. And I think most people, we would say, no, I'm going to put that twenty eight hundred towards a mortgage and own something versus. Rental forever. There's going to be a percentage of the population naturally that want to rent, don't want to own for whatever. Personal reasons. Yes, you have to come up with a a significant down payment. That might be a reason why. They can't. Yes, there are other costs involved, condo fees, if it's a condo. You know, taxes, there's a whole bunch of other stuff that that would be involved on top of that. Um but. I I think that gap is so close, so close now. The rental is so high that um. We have to keep that in mind when we're making this decision. As it sits right now. Doesn't make a lot of sense to me unless there are other, some other incentives there. Um I have a tough time using tax dollars for this purpose.
Also, Bernard.
Thank you. Um appreciate the comments of councillor Weiss and councillor Gallo. Interesting point, councillor Gallo. Um I agree with what they've said. Uh and also, we we must remember that this is uh these are going to, they're not going to be affordable. It's everybody. They're going to be affordable to low middle income. People. So you know, when I think of affordable housing, of course, I want affordable housing for everyone. But um. This isn't really what I consider affordable housing. I think from the work that I've done, I know councillor Thompson said some figures last uh last meeting, which. I don't remember, but I I think the the average rent for a one bedroom, one bathroom in Aurora. Is closer to maybe twenty one hundred, two thousand one hundred dollars. Um. And. The problem is there's not a lot to compare it with. I I agree and and uh. I agree that we need more rental housing. But to me, this is uh the taxpayer is going to take a fall for this. And um I have to be more concerned about. My taxpayers, that's that's my job to 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 try and do the best that I can for them with respect to taxes. And uh I don't know if it was said probably that. There's going to be a three million dollar deficit. That we have to, we have to find that money from somewhere. Um. So where we, that's a lot of money. And um. You know, I, everybody knows how I feel about developers. I I don't want to get twenty five percent in quotes, affordable housing. Um. And then subsidize the other seventy five percent of the construction. To the developer and that's the way I see it. And I I know everybody will agree with me, but I just. I just think this is wrong. I think it's wrong for our Aurora taxpayers. And so I will have to vote against this.
Counsel.
Thank you. Uh I'm a little conflicted about this whole model. I'm trying to understand. Um how this came to fruition and how this became um. A solution to the problem of affordable housing and getting purposeful rental. Uh units in our town. Uh I can say that I've been a big supporter of intensifying around our M T S A area. And uh having rentals available, and this is a prime location for it. I also do understand that performa does play a role when it comes to the cost of building. And how can we incentivize developers to come in and build um homes or rental apartments or condos and so forth? And also include an affordable aspect. And so through you, Mr. Mayor, to Miss Wayne Ben Kessel or Mr. Ramuno, I'm not sure who. Um but the region obviously has come forward with this policy. Um feeling that this is the best foot forward to help move this type of development. And in a faster fashion to allow us to have more of this type of housing. Is that the best solution that the region has come up with? It's their policy and we're trying to align ourselves with this their policy and that's what this conversation seems to be around.
Ramuno, I I believe the applicants or the the developer reached out to the region to take advantage of their deferral programs. The deferral program's been in in. In place for, I forgot how many years, but it's been quite a while. Um and um once, once the developer applied for it. Uh as it's been stated, I think by Mr. Ramuno and Mr. Mayor and Kessel, uh the only way that it would be um implemented is is if the local municipality as well. Uh gets on board with it. So that's why it's in front of us because the region sends it to us and says they've applied for it. If you guys are in favor of it, then we will move forward with it. But Mr. Ramuno, did I? Do you want to add anything?
You, Mr. Mayor, that that's correct. Uh exactly that. And the only thing I'll add is this uh purpose built uh incentive program has been in place at the region. Close to ten years and the primary purpose is really to increase the number of purpose built rentals in order to provide that uh type of housing stock. And I think we list in the report that York region has, you know, only eighteen percent of its housing stock. Uh that is purpose but rental, lowest in the G T A. Town of Aurora, we're at like two percent. So the real critical part here is to try and incentivize purpose built rental. Uh and I understand the charts may seem a little confusing, but. The um. On table three and four, what to keep keep in mind, the second college is the average rent. That is what the both proposal, both owners of those projects are have provided with respect to their projected average rents. And they are lower than the regional policy of the hundred seventy five percent threshold and they're actually. Uh you know, up to thirty forty percent of those units are below uh the Aurora's one twenty five percent threshold.
Counsel.
Thank you. I I guess my comment then would be to you, Mr. Mayor, as a regional representative. Um I I I'm supposing the region believes that this deferral program. Is um a program that does give a very good incentive and they they stand behind it. As a as a tool to utilize uh as an incentive for developers to come into our communities to build purposeful. Built rentals. So I'm just curious as to your thoughts on that as a regional rep.
I think, I think that the region um has looked at many different ways to in incentivize. I had just recently uh last week. In a special council meeting, the region has decided to defer all um all D Cs to occupancy. On high rise as well as to uh building permits on on ground related thing. And that's to incentivize people. Uh developers getting shovels in the ground because ultimately what's happening is is that uh they're having to pay the D Cs at the beginning uh of the process. Uh which could become a little bit of a financial burden, especially in these times. And so therefore uh the region is constantly looking at. Ways that they could provide uh more incentives to make sure that not only are we providing affordable housing. But we're providing a diverse housing stock within each nine of our municipalities. Because it's important. I mean, because at the end of the day, everything can't be about affordability. We need to provide opportunities for people to break into the market. And sometimes that also includes purpose built rentals, as Mr. Ramuno mentioned. We're only at two percent, eighteen percent of the region. We're on the lowest. Probably one of the lowest uh as a region right across the entire G T H A. And so it's a concern when we don't have purpose built rentals in our community because we need to have. That uh diverse housing stock within our community to provide, as I mentioned, those opportunities for people to break into the market or to rent. Uh some people like to rent. And so we have to provide those opportunities for people to rent in our community as well and allows them to live, work and play. So. Anything I think that the region can do to incentivize and as we'll discuss, there's uh more opportunities. Uh as as well as the motion that I have uh before us at the end of this uh this agenda.
Thank you. So uh so what I'm hearing is that the you as a rep and the region feel that this is a good policy um to incentivize. So. And this is just a genuine question is is just trying to understand the consequence. We've been talking about the deferral and the cost and so forth. Um you know, I, in my personal opinion, I do feel that we, you know, I agree, we need to incentivize um developers to put the shovels in the ground faster and obviously the cost and performo, take that in consideration. Um but it's just a genuine question. It's just the long term consequence of that. Uh. How is the region feel about the long term consequence? Because obviously if if they're deferring on their end, it's going to defer on our end. You know, considered our own social justice that we do here. Um what is that long term vision? Are we looking at trying to access uh? Funds from the federal government or provincial government? I I like, I'm just trying to understand where that shortfall is going to come. I'm not saying I don't disagree with this here, but I think that's some of the confusion and the understanding is, well, it looks great on the surface now. What happens down the road?
Hey, councillor, I think I can tell you that the region is constantly looking for funding opportunities. We know that uh anything that we do when it comes to the housing crisis, that it will take. Not only the municipal level, but it'll take all three levels of government to work uh uh in. In combination to try to find solutions that can help provide uh you know, relief, uh also for funding supports for municipalities. As we all know. Obviously, uh when it comes to infrastructure, we need to ensure that the infrastructure is available. Uh as we continue to grow. And so we need to look for predictable funding for that infrastructure as well. And we're asking the province and the federal government to provide that funding. Uh as well. There's been talk about standardizing uh D Cs right across the board. Um these are things that uh that all three levels are trying to work at to try to find those opportunities to provide. As I said, not only affordable housing within our communities, but that diverse housing stock. And we're going to continue to push uh the province as well as uh the federal government. Hopefully, after the election, we'll be able to sit down with the new minister of housing, uh whoever that will uh shall be, and we'll be able to have those conversations to ensure that. Our community gets the proper funding as well as the region to support the growth that uh that is anticipated amongst our municipalities.
Thank you. Uh just a a follow up question. Do we know if there's any federal funding that's currently being offered to the region or our municipality now through the federal government that? Um that we could access in something like this now?
Mr. Van Kessel.
Uh through you, Mr. Mayor, I'm not aware of anything at this time. I know some other municipalities did receive some federal funding under the Housing Accelerator Fund and they're using it for this type of purpose. Uh but we did not receive anything in that.
And I will s- add the Housing Accelerator Fund uh is not eligible at the region. It's only eligible to the local municipalities. Counsel.
Thank you. And am I to assume because of the planning process or has that planning, because the planning process has changed at a regional level? And being pushed down to the more on the municipality, does that change the way the accelerated fund? and being pushed down to the more on the municipality, does that change the way the Accelerator Fund would work?
No, that, that was the way the, Counselor, that was the way the Accelerator Fund was set up from the beginning. The region was never eligible to receive those funds because the Accelerator Fund is based on who issues the permits, and the local municipality issues the permits, so therefore they're the ones that are only eligible for the funding. Region has never issued permits.
Right, I, I understand. I just didn't know if maybe that had changed now that we've taken away some of that responsibility on the regional level, and it's been pushed down the municipality. Okay, well, I'll, I'll be interested in reaching out to our local representatives, maybe after the federal election, to get a little bit more clarity on that. That's great. Aside from that, when it comes to what we're trying to achieve today, I'm, I know I'm in support of trying to ensure we have some housing stock, especially around the MTSA. Am I a little uncertain as to what that's going to be and the consequence? I haven't necessarily had a full picture about what that means. But I do look at this as a meet in the middle attempt. I wish it wasn't necessarily with this ambiguity attached to it, but I do want to see some growth happening in around this area to give opportunity to the people here who live in Aurora as well. So I know some comments were made about, obviously, the taxpayers, but there are taxpaying families here who have families within the families who are also wanting to maintain their residency here in Aurora, and, and this gives them that opportunity. Thanks.
Yeah, Counselor Kim.
Hi, Mr. Mayor. Just at a high level, you know, when we talk about, we've talked about affordable housing quite a bit over the years, and you know, we can't be dogmatic about it, you know, we can't be an ideologue. You know, we need to exercise our pragmatism. You know, instead of thinking about what can possibly go wrong, you know, I like to kind of think of it as what can possibly go right. You know, it's not pragmatic, nor is it realistic to say we want affordable housing, and yet, but we don't want to pay for it or no cost to taxpayers. Now, who will pay for it then? You know, we need to understand that someone in society will pay for it. You know, we have no business saying we, we want affordable housing if we're not willing to understand that taxpayers through, you know, various levels of government will likely pay some of the costs, and that's the taxpayers. So, you know, I, I commend staff for, you know, for the report and, and, and as someone previously mentioned, the being creative in terms of different ways to meet our goal. I did have some questions, but I think I do recall Director Wayne Wright Van Kessel sending an email, I believe, on, on some of the questions I had. I'm just going to reread it, so I'm not going to regurgitate that now, but between now and Council, I'll talk with staff with the personal questions I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Reese, second.
Yes, thank you. And this, my second one is just, has to do with something that I thought I may have heard our CFO say. You said that if we declined this, that, that I, I don't know your exact words, but you said that they, they may be able to walk away from this. I don't want to, I mean, we've been through a lot of history with this, with both Bursey Street and Metcalf. And I guess I want to find out the consequences of that and see whether that's in fact a likelihood, because nobody wants to see that happen. So through you, Mayor, maybe to either to Mark, to Mr. Ramuno, to give us a lay of the land of what happens in a consequence of where we may say, no, we don't want this deal with respect to this purpose, these two purpose built rentals, what happens next?
Ramuno.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. So with respect to the two projects, the one on Metcalf, we're actually dealing very closely with the applicant, Attraic Developments, finalizing the site plan application, which is, you know, councils approved the official plan and zoning by law for the project, but we're, we're going through that final engineering and architectural design exercise. They're very interested in this, taking advantage of this project. They haven't necessarily indicated that they wouldn't proceed if, if they weren't eligible. But I think they are definitely counting on it because they did approach the region when they were aware of the regional project, program. But they've told us, best case scenario, they will be in the, in the ground this fall. They've got a lot of cleanup to do, demolitions, and they've actually talked to our CBO about demolition permits, so they're serious to move forward with, you know, first phase of the project. The Bursey Street proposal, the owner is still, you know, interested, looking for, for partners, but they are also interested in this taking advantage of the regional incentive program. You know, if Council doesn't approve it, I can't say with any certainty that, that they won't proceed or, or they will, but I think they are both interested, and they approached us in the region when they were aware of the regional project. As I mentioned, the regions had this project in place for a number of years, and I think the first proponent was up in New Market along Davis Drive, there's a number of buildings, rental, purpose built rental buildings that were built and have taken advantage of this regional project. Program, sorry.
Thanks, I appreciate that. And also the comment that this has been in place for ten years, and it doesn't sound like it's been successful. Is that a, is that a reflection of the market, do you think? I mean, because if we're going to go through this, and we don't have anything that's a precedent before us that says, yeah, this works and this is beneficial. Do we have some precedents in York region or elsewhere where these types of DC referrals have actually stimulated activity because it's reduced costs to the consumer through you to?
Yes, Counselor, I believe other municipalities in, in York region have utilized this deferral program. I believe Markham has done it a couple of times. But Mr. Ramuno, if there's others, but I know the Markham one, because I've talked to Mayor Skarpity about.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, that's correct. Markham, a number of projects, Rose Corporation, along Davis Drive and New Market. And I believe there, there may be something in Richmond Hill and Vaughan. And we have, again, over the past few years, there wasn't much uptick on purpose built rentals. But those builders are interested in moving forward with purpose built rentals. They definitely see the, the market, market conditions there. Because again, as the mayor mentioned, they are deemed to be affordable only simply because there are people who can't afford to buy, or there are people on fixed incomes who don't want to, you know, invest their resources in a home purchase, and there are people that are really just interested in rental ownership, whether it's short term or, or a long term. But we are definitely seeing a lot more interest, you know, region wide in purpose built rentals.
Counselor.
Thank you. Well, I'm, I appreciate all the work that has been done into this on behalf of purpose built rentals, and those people are looking for affordable housing. I've done some research on the effect of DCs on that, and there's, it's equivocal right now that a lot of people aren't saying, no, they have very little effect because it doesn't really trickle down to the consumer. However, I like to see, I like some of the guardrails that we have in here with respect to rental rates, et cetera, that should offset that. So I'm, I'm really interested in seeing what this actual cost is going to be to us and where that money is going to come out of and back into before Council next, or two weeks from now, or three weeks from now, because I think there's a little work to be done. I want to know, I, I want this to happen. But I don't want it to be on the backs of taxpayers and not be successful. So I'm really looking, hopefully you get some of the information or the questions that we've had here, and we'll be able to have a, a an approval of this in, when we go to Council. Thanks.
Yeah. Counselor Grant. Second.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There are a couple of things that haven't been mentioned. One of the things that concerns me the most is I'm only looking at the one bedroom apartments. They are going to be from four hundred and thirty one square feet, four hundred and thirty one square feet to six hundred and fifty three square feet. And I can tell you that the ones that are most affordable are obviously going to be the smallest. So that's a box. The other thing, it says on page two, that strives to incentivize rental developments that are affordable to moderate income households. I would like to do that for moderate income households. But what about the lower income households? And another plus for this is it says that it would support more complete communities. One of the things about complete communities I've taken from the province's website is a walking distance of eight hundred meters to community facilities, including food stores. There's nothing around there. There, there may in the future, we have another item tonight, that might have some small, you know, more expensive type convenience food stores. But there's no way to walk to a food store. So putting the word affordable in the context of the size that's being offered and the fact that this is not a, a complete community, this is very inconvenient community for people who are of lower income. And it's going to cost us a minimum of three million dollars. We know that for sure. So it, well, it's going to cost the taxpayer a minimum of three million dollars. If this was completely affordable, if both of these builds were completely affordable, not twenty five percent affordable, then yeah, we have a responsibility as a community to provide these kind of rental, purpose built rentals. But this, this does not fit the bill. And it is going to hurt my Aurora taxpayers, and I'm not willing to subsidize developers to do that. Thank you.
Counselor Thompson.
Thank you. Appreciate hearing all the comments around the table. I think I share the same, some of the same concerns with regards to the fact that it seems like we're all trying to conduct our own cost benefit analysis to really determine the value as well as the cost associated with the project. Through you to Mr. Ramuno. I guess, Mr. Ramuno, you know, and you addressed it a little bit in, in Counselor Reese's question with regards to timelines, more so for Metcalf than for, for Bursey, but I guess, you know, if Council were to choose not to proceed with this, do we see that stopping them from putting shovels in the ground? And, and I know I'm asking you to crystal ball it, but part of the, I guess, the, the cost benefit analysis is that the sooner they build, the sooner we collect taxes, and that can help generate some revenue to offset the cost of the deferral program. So I'm just trying to still get that sense of what happens if we do or don't proceed with this.
Mr. Ramuno, and I think it's tough for Mr. Ramuno, as you said, he's crystal balling it, and I think it's tough for him to, to answer that question. I think there's a lot, many scenarios that could occur, whether it's they, they could decide to hold off and not proceed, or they could decide to turn it into condos instead of rentals, or they could move forward with what they proposed. I think all three of those options could occur, and I think it would be tough for Mr. Ramuno to ask Mr. Ramuno to give a, an answer on which one they, they will decide to do.
I, I agree. There's the potential that they would go ahead with the plans with or without the deferral. And as you said, they, they could decide to go in condos, but, you know, Counselor Gallows points valid as well, is that you look at some of those rents versus what the margin would be on some of those units, and you're not that far off either. And so that's the challenge in determining, is this in the best interest of everybody?
Any other comments, questions? Call the vote. All those in favor? Post? Who else? Just received. Thank you. Secondary. Counselor Reese, all those in favor? Post that carries. Take our health break. Ten minutes, everyone.
Ten minutes, everyone. Okay, we're, council, we're back. Move to fourteen point one. This is, Counselor Wies, you pulled this one. Did you want to move the recommendation?
Which one?
Thank you. Secondaire. Counselor Kim, go ahead, Counsel Wies.
I'm not the best person, I don't think, to pull, which is why I have the, a lot of questions on it. And I'm really interested in hearing what other council members say, because when I look at this on the face of it, I mean, it violates a number of things in our OP with height, with density, site plan changes, having to do with setbacks, landscaping, and a variety of other things. And so my real
Counselor, this is the Heritage Adoption
Oh, sorry.
Grant Program.
Thank you. Thank you for correcting me. The Heritage one's easier for me to get onto, so.
Do you want to move the original recommendation?
Let me do that. I apologize. No, I didn't. Oh, yes, just to receive.
To, to receive and adopt the Heritage Grant Program?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Secondaire, Counselor Kim. So, you're good? Okay. Thank you. Go ahead, Counsel Wies.
Ken, go ahead. Great, thanks. It says in there, there's a, it's open to all designated eligible homes. Is that, does that exclude heritage buildings that are businesses? Is this a home-only thing or not? So through you to probably Mr. Ramuno or
Mr. Mayor, if I can ask our manager of policy and heritage planning to come up. He worked on developing, creating the, the program, Adam.
It's Rob, welcome.
Hello, everyone. Through you, Mr. Mayor. It would apply to both residential and commercial.
Yeah, so long as it's designated, then it's eligible for that. And it's funded through the reserve fund, and I read that that was about close to three hundred thousand dollars now. And there's a three, a thirty K cap on each one of these. And there's a certain number that are being done every year, so we've got a runway on this. We're not worried about the, the cash in the bank rate at the moment. It's just a matter of selecting. Okay, so where is this fund replenished? Where is it replenished from? So we take money out of it, and where does it come? And is it replenished through you, Adam?
Yes, Rob. Through you, Mr. Mayor. Historically, the fund could be replenished through a development application where there's an in-kind contribution made through a development proposal that impacts the heritage asset, for example.
Okay, okay, that's all I have. Thank you.
You, Counselor Gardner?
Thank you, through Mr. Mayor. To Mr. Rob. If we give this money and the house is then sold, do we get this money back?
Yes, Rob.
The likelihood that during the process of a home, you know, I'll call it a, a heritage permit or an alteration, and going through this grant process and a sale occurring is, is most likely unlikely. Because what we would have to do is also, we built into the program an inspection program. Where we're inspecting the policy. If there is, happened to be a sale of the property, that would, that would be something that, you know, the, we'd have an agreement in place to bind the original owner to that, so.
And I didn't really mean to imply, I didn't mean to imply that if somebody was using this in order to fix up their house before sale. But again, this is taxpayers' money. Apart from the graffiti removal, perhaps, we're, we're adding to the value of the home. So at some point, when it gets sold, why couldn't we recoup the money? Maybe that's more a question for Ms. Winright Van Kessel, but that sounds fair to me. If we, if we, so through Mr. Mayor and Ms. Van Kessel, if we give somebody a gra, Heritage Grant, the money's from the taxpayer. So wouldn't it be appropriate when the home was sold that we might recoup that money? We're not checking about a lot of money, but it's the principle.
Yes, Rob.
Oh, sorry.
You, Mr. Mayor, I can maybe clarify a little bit too, because really the intent of the Heritage Grant Program is to, you know, improve our public realm too, right? So there is a public asset, a public benefit to these heritage properties as well. I think that's something that's sort of, you know, important with this program. It's, it's about preserving our built heritage as a community perspective.
Okay. Thank you.
No problem. Counsel Gallon?
Thank you. I just, I had a question about the, the grant program in general. And now we're resurrecting this from something we already had, because we put it on hold, or is this new? Because it's, it's including homeownership now.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, this is brand new. This was through a council motion passed last year, entirely created and housed by, by our staff.
Thank you. Perhaps getting confused, because I know that we had a Heritage Grant Program of sorts. I guess maybe through Mr. Ramuno, that did apply to some heritage buildings downtown. Mr. Ramuno, maybe you would like to, through Mr. Mayor and Mr. Ramuno, could you maybe touch on that?
Through you, Mr. Through you, Mr. Mayor, I think you're referring to the previous community improvement plan.
Sorry?
Yeah, the CIP plan. So we had, did have incentives and grants and funds available for heritage restorations, facade restorations. That was in place for about five or six years, but that's been it's been repealed for a number of years. So this is completely different.
Counsel.
Thank you. So essentially, it's, it's similar, but it's now got a new name with some new policies attached to it, or some, the program attached to it. So it's, it's similar, if that's fair to say. One of the things that I had discovered about this program that has been repealed wasn't as successful as we had liked it to be. And my concern is with the current Heritage Grant Program before us today also shares some of those barriers as to why some of the business owners in particular share with me of why they didn't utilize this type of program. And, and one of them was the fact that what was being asked was to apply for these funds and then put all the capital upfront and then get reimbursed. Over from my understanding from some business owners, property owners and so forth, the reason why they didn't go through with the old program was because the intent was for them to save the capital, because they couldn't necessarily afford the twenty-five thousand or ten thousand. And so I don't see any changes here with that grant program unless I'm mistaken. Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Rob.
And from the CIP, I, I, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe the CIP was mostly focused on the downtown business community, right? This is geared towards heritage buildings. And again, it's residential and commercial. We already have, I have heard from members of the public who are interested in this program as well. So I do think there will be uptick in it. And what differs with this as well is the fact that, again, as a designated heritage property, it's going to be more, it's going to apply to a broader scope across the entirety of the town. As well through this, it's going to be tied concurrent to a heritage permit application. So through a resident applying through their heritage permit to alter a designated heritage structure, there is some level of certainty in the fact that council will be able to approve that permit and then give them essentially the green light, knowing that their design is approved. Right? And one thing we also have done through advice from, comments from the Heritage Advisory Committee, is we've also gone in touch with the local home hardware as well to provide further discounts to potential grants applicants as well. So that's another caveat to this program.
Counselor?
Thank you. I appreciate that. Doesn't necessarily solve the capital upfront issue, and that could be a barrier again to some individuals, depending on the scope of work. Is there any appetite to perhaps offer a percentage of the project upfront to help push the, the project forward? Considering they have to have the process, go through the approval process, get your permits and so forth. And so essentially, what this looks like is you're waiting for the sign-off to say, you know, here's a box you're checking off, tick, you did it. Is there a way, is there an appetite to where we could actually maybe give them a certain percentage upfront to allow them to facilitate that change?
Shrub.
I do, I respect that point, but I do think with heritage, there is a delicate balance and also recognizing the need for inspecting the work once it's finally completed, right? We want to make sure the work is done to the standards of that designation by law. I think that's critical with this program, with designated heritage properties in particular, is that we want to make sure the work is done to our standard before releasing those funds. I do think that is the best practice.
Counselor?
Thank you. I, I mean, I respect that. However, at the same time, then, I would like to have my own checks and balances report back to council on the success of the program. Or are we just creating a whole other program with a different fancy name? And it's just not successful. I certainly wouldn't want to be in a position again to where we're just repealing something because it doesn't work. So I guess through you, Mr. Mayor, to Mr. Ramuno, is this something that you could report back to council? And let us know, I don't know what would be a good timeline, whether it's a year, just to kind of give us a status update on success and how it's being utilized. Certainly, if it's not being utilized, then clearly we're not guiding policy and principles and what we're creating here. If it doesn't work, then what's really the point? We're trying to incentivize people to use it. And if we're not incentivizing people to use it properly, then we got to make some changes to it.
Certainly through you, Mr. Mayor. As Adam mentioned, again, I mean, there's a lot of, there is interest in the community from, from folks who want to restore, preserve their heritage homes. And as Adam mentioned, I mean, they'd be required to submit a heritage permit for their works that would be vetted through the Heritage Advisory Committee and then on a council for final approval. And so that'll be an indication. And again, on a yearly basis, we can provide a, an update to council on, you know, the number, a recap on a number of applications that we've seen and that have been vetted through staff and the Heritage Committee, and that, that wouldn't be an issue.
Thank you. So would this be a report? Obviously, we have a reserve right now that's sitting in here with a bucket. So would this be something that would be fair? Maybe we review our budget or like what would be an appropriate time? Like I, I just, I just want to, I'm just trying to understand the timeline of what would make sense.
All right, I can take it through, through you, Mr. Mayor. So with each grant application requires council's approval. And through our report, we do indicate as well that each application, as it's presented to council, will provide an overview of the financial impact against the reserve, as well as a recap even on the number of the grants that have been applied for a year-to-date, as well as what our thirty K annual cap, where we're at in terms of that as well.
Counselor?
I appreciate that. And just out of curiosity, through you, Mr. Mayor, to Mr. Rob, you had suggested that there was been some interest. So I'm just curious as to what that interest entails. Like, how many people have come, supported this idea that's ready to hop on the bandwagon here?
Shrub.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. So I, I have spoken to a number of property owners, a couple in the Heritage District itself that are interested, that have followed this you know, from its inception a year ago with the council motion. One thing I will highlight as well though too, is that through our communications team, we will also be you know, promoting this program a lot more once it receives council approval. We do have a webpage already established. It will be promoted. We'll have social media blasts really put the word out there as well. But it is, you know, the designated, the Part Five Heritage District that I've heard a few residents.
Counselor?
So a couple, a couple people so far. So would it be fair to, because we also have a designated Heritage District, which not all municipalities have, that we could send a mailer specifically to that geocache area, since it would be specific to them? I mean, I don't really see any value spending, you know, social media blasts to a geocache area outside of that area. Let's just target that area in general and wherever our heritage buildings are, it probably a bit more cost-effective. Is that something that we could do?
That's a good idea.
Thank you.
I just wanted to make sure I understand this, Mr. Mayor. To Mr. Rob or Mr. Ramuno. So these grants are for one thou, one thousand, five thousand and ten thousand. Are you saying that every grant is going to come to council?
Shrub.
Like any, like a one thousand dollar grant?
Shrub.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, yes, alongside a heritage permit. That's something that we would seek council approval for, for spending grant money, yes.
Okay, well, through, through, to you, Mr. Mayor or to council. Thank you, Mr. Thank you, Mr. Rob. I think there will be a lot of interest in this. But we'll see how it goes. I, I don't think I want to hear about a lot of one thousand dollar grants. We've, we've delegated subdivision, site plans for subdivisions to Mr. Ramuno, so.
We didn't delegate province.
Province did. I, I certainly would like to see the five and ten thousand. And possibly like we do with the grants that we give. I remember what we, I think there are more recreation grants, like we see a listing. We could see a listing every six months. Depending, depending upon how popular this is. I, I see Mr. Ramuno nodding. Thank you. I I see Mr. Ramuno nodding. Thank you. Thank you, Mr.
Okay, Councilor Kim.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, thank you, Mr. Rob, for the uh the detailed uh uh report. You know, there's a few other municipalities in in Canada that have a heritage uh property grant program. Uh, I'm looking at Cambridge and they have up to uh maximum five thousand uh or half of the value of the uh the work. And you look at Prince Edward County, they're even more detailed. They even do the interior. Um, so what were some of the variables um that you considered that is a made for Aurora's solution? I'm sure you've you've looked at what other municipalities have been doing or are doing. And um so if you can kind of just share with us why you structured Aurora the way it is.
Yes, through you, Mr. Mayor. So we did do a municipal best practice review and we also, of course, consulted with our Heritage Advisory Committee. One thing uh in terms of comments back from the committee was that we didn't want to structure this, especially in its inception here as as generally being a pilot at that thirty K threshold. Uh, that can be increased in the balance of time at council's discretion. But we were aware of that Cambridge scenario as well, but recognizing that fifty percent matching or that that structure they have. We didn't want to overburn the program too early in the process as well. We wanted to start at a thirty K. Recognizing that if the program is highly successful and there's an incentive or a want or desire to increase to say fifty K or more or restructure things after this first or second year, that can entirely be considered as well.
Counselor.
Okay, that's all. Thank you.
Any other comments, questions? Call to vote, polls favor. Oh, that carries. Fourteen point two, Councilor Reese, you pulled this. Do you want to move it?
Uh, yes, thank you.
You second her? Nelson, thank you. Councilor Reese, go ahead.
Yes, I started this one a while back, so I won't uh go through that. Um, but I I am interested in uh hearing what my uh colleagues will say about this one because it's uh significantly different than what I've read from the history. Um, but I do see that the um staff is making the recommendations for this, so I'm I'm buoyed by that. Um, I will ask a question though uh about the question that I asked of the applicant because there's a lot of discussion around the incentive program and I asked for the incentive program and could you give me details about that? And I, he said, no, it's just in in uh being proposed right now. But I don't, I looked for it and I didn't see it in the report. So can, is there some way to identify um whether that, what that incentive program is and should it be even included in this decision? So through you probably to Mr. Ramuno.
Mr. Ramuno.
Certainly through you, Mr. Mayor. So um the report for four years to deal with the official plan amendment and zoning by law amendment applications to establish the uh increase in heightened density. Uh, the applicant hasn't submitted a a site plan application yet. But there were also, and we mentioned in in the report, um they're not requesting an amendment to our uh policy of requiring thirty five percent uh of uh affordable units within the major transit station area. But that is something when they do come in with uh a formal site plan application, we're going to have to sit down and have that discussion with respect to the unit breakdown and how many of those those units uh meet our affordability threshold. Uh, now again, this app, the the app today, this applicant isn't considering a purpose built rental. It's a market type uh uh condominium uh building. But it's something at the site plan stage, uh we'll have, they'll have to comply with the our official plan policies.
Now, sir.
So it's really a not yet, but you're going to have that conversation, but it won't happen till a site on a site plan. So what we're being asked is to approve this without knowing about that incentive program and all the affordability is really off at the table because you haven't had that discussion about it yet. So I get that. Um, I'd like to hear what others have to say uh before I uh do my my vote. So I'll leave leave the floor to others.
Keep Councilor Gal.
Thank you. Uh, and this is in my ward and um been trying to pay close attention to it. Um, could I get some clarity around um the the parking, specifically handicap and um visitor parking through you, Mr. Mayor? To Mr. Ramuno, um, I I realize that our, I believe our current official plan, they actually don't have to build any any parking, but that wouldn't make sense to anyone, including the developer. But it does say, I believe there's eight hundred and something uh parking units proposed, but I'm having a little bit of difficulty with the visitor and the um the handicap parking.
Shrap.
Certainly through you, Mr. Mayor. So yeah, the proposal is for a uh um you know, four twelve story buildings, total unit count is nine hundred and forty eight uh residential units. Uh, three levels of underground parking, uh total of six hundred and, or sorry, eight hundred and sixty two parking spaces underground. Um, there is some surface parking within that sort of courtyard area uh where they've got site, the conceptual pipe site plan shows a number, I think it's about half a dozen visitor spaces. Uh, and they've also identified uh some accessible parking spaces there as well. But as I mentioned before, uh when the site plan comes in, uh that that'll be our opportunity to uh refine sort of the uh parking requirements. Uh uh, we'll sit down with the applicant to determine how many visitor spaces should be uh designated, you know, on surface and underground along with the accessible parking spaces. But Councilor Gal, you're right, the the new provincial legislation within the um this area or major transit station area uh doesn't work, doesn't allow a municipality require a minimum parking. But again, you know, this is town of Aurora, this applicant is like most applicants are showing uh parking, they're showing some substantial parking over eight hundred spaces. So there's plenty of opportunity to identify uh designated visitor spaces as well as the required number of accessible uh accessible spaces. Our zoning by law requirement, I don't have it in front of me, but it's based on a number of spaces that are uh provided that I I believe it's for every uh sliding scale for every certain number of parking spaces, uh one has to be identified as accessible. So there'd be a requirement for a number of accessible spaces. I don't see that as a problem because they are providing uh plenty of parking.
Counselor.
Sir, ba- based on the number of of units, is there a a a ratio for for um handicap parking?
So you must, that's correct. I don't have it in front of me, but our zoning by law identifies that based on the number of spaces being provided, a certain ratio has to be accessible.
Mr. Ramuno.
Similar to.
And and I think, Councilor Gal, I think you asked based on the units or based on the spaces? So that you're asking based on the units, right? So is it based on the units, Mr. Ramuno, or based on the amount of spaces?
It's based, it's based on the amount of parking spaces provided. There's a ratio for accessible and visitor.
Okay. But if 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 they don't have to provide any, that that wouldn't mean that they don't have to provide any any accessible parking. That wouldn't make any sense.
Mr. Ramuno.
Through you, Mr. That's true. We never had that situation, so I don't foresee it to be a problem. And again, here they've got plenty of parking, so they there will be, will be a requirement for designated visitor and accessible parking spaces.
Counselor.
And through you, has this gone through the accessibility advisory committee yet?
Mr. Ramo.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, I believe we send all applications, but again, they really want to see the site plan application. So I don't believe there would have been much uh comments from our accessibility uh coordinator. They really need to see our our formal site plan application. So when that comes in, that's that'll be circulated to all internal departments.
And as far as um amenity space, there's obviously a request for a reduction. Do we know where those would be located? Through you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Ramo.
Through you, through you, Mr. Mayor. And again, just uh my correction, yeah, we we have uh have have circulated to the town Accessibility Advisory Committee and they reviewed the applicant, current application, uh but they do want to see the uh formal site plan with respect to amenity uh area. They are um requesting an exception to our zoning uh bylaw. As you're aware, our zoning bylaw requires eighteen meter square meters of many space um for each unit. They're providing, I believe it is six meters and that's comprised of shared indoor many space, shared outdoor amenity space, as well as private balconies and uh patios and rooftops. But it's uh currently it's at uh six square meters per unit.
Counselor.
Um, I I did a quick math. That's about sixty six thousand square feet. I'm just, I'm just. And I guess at this stage, we we don't have a site plan. It's really unfortunate that the province, Mr. Mayor, has not allowed us to to weigh in on on that because these types of details would have been uh part of that. Uh, I'm not suggesting there's anything wrong with relying on staff to filter through all of these things. Um, but it's good to sit here and understand them and know where uh everything is is going to go. Um, generally speaking, I've been a huge proponent of a concentration of density around public transportation corridors. That's where we want density. Um, this is one of those projects. It's a hop, skip and a jump from our uh train station. Um, I think there's a few things between now and council. I'd I'd like to understand a little bit better. Um, I believe from their website, the incentive program is uh up to fifteen percent. They'd kind of lend a new homeowner um for a period of time. I'm not sure what it is, three or five years, interest free to try to promote um the sale of of these units. But I think between now and council, we should have a better grip of what that incentive program is. How many of those units are they proposing to to do that, to whom, how that, the structure of that, I think should be clear to us between now and and uh and council. Um, but generally speaking, I've had one email against uh this or had some concerns about this. Um, and in my ward around this project, I've had no concerns um with it. Uh, again, I've been a big proponent of um density around public transportation corridors, and I think that's what we're all uh looking for. We had a previous uh discussion about affordability and there's, I think the vast majority, some over seven hundred of these are one bedrooms. I don't know what the size is, but you know, I'm going to guess, and I don't know what the sales are going to be, but right now somewhere between a thousand, twelve hundred dollars a square feet foot probably isn't that far off, maybe on the higher end. Um, which means five or six hundred square foot unit is six, seven hundred thousand dollars. Um, you can do the math uh that while not deemed affordable, but if we compare that to the rental rates that we just previously discussed, I'd be more inclined to review any um development charge incentives to projects where the outcome is someone having ownership versus rental. Um, so I'm in support of this. I'm short of some loose ends between now and council that I'd like to see.
Okay, Councilor Garner.
Um, I support the comments of both of the councillors who spoke previously. Um, this is going to be nine hundred and forty eight apartments, conservatively two thousand residents. Um, the, if ever there was a need for an amenity space, um, they're dividing it by two thirds. They're asking for two thirds less. Um, to me, that's not acceptable. I I would like to, Mr. Munoz heard me before speak about amenity space, but to go from eighteen square meters per dwelling unit to six point five square meters, um, we certainly would need to have a a picture of this and where it's located for the council meeting. Um, with respect to the parking, um, they're allowing five visitor parking, five, one handicapped and one drive share. Um, and all but a hundred of the apartments are going to have a parking spot. So, Mr. Mayor, you made a motion and I supported it. Um, I think the intent was around major transit stations to to reduce the parking standard because we want people who live in this building, these built four buildings, to take advantage of them being right almost next to the go station. So I I don't understand that and I don't agree with it. There's far too many parking spots made available for tenants and far too few for visitors. I mean, we're going, are visitors going to be parking on Industrial Parkway North? Or Wellington? That needs to be taken care of. Um, and also, you know, if we're going to be doing something where people are using transit, there should be more than one, in my opinion, more than one car share space. Um, through you, Mr. Mayor to Mr. Ramuno, I didn't have a chance to ask him, Mr. Ramuno, I asked you so many questions in the last couple of days, but it it is um according to Schedule Q of our official plan. It says these lands fall within the ecologically significant groundwater recharge area. That's all that it says in this about that in this report, which is a fairly nineteen page report. So we don't have a map of where this recharge area is. We don't have any information on how um this building is going to affect the recharge area. That is, so that's rain that falls that goes into the soil that eventually ends up in our aquifer. I I I think that's really disappointing that we don't have any information on that. It, perhaps you have some information you can present or certainly if if not at the council meeting, it's sorry, ecologically significant feature. And we don't have anything about that in our report. Um, one of the buildings that was on this property was um Aurora Tire and Wheel. So I wanted to know if there was any concern about soil pollution. I I don't know what what products or chemicals were tired wheel used, but um, so the the question is, does that property need to be checked for pollution? Um, if, through you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Ramo.
Through you, Mr. Uh, Mayor, just a, just a couple of comments. I'll go back. So the application has, you know, uh, the applicant submitted all the required background studies. Um, it conforms to the Lake Simcoe uh Protection Plan. Conservation Authority has signed off on the applications. Um, it's located outside the regulated limit, the limits of the Conservation Authority. Uh, moving forward as part of the site plan application, um, all the other required background studies, if they haven't been already reviewed, and most of them have, uh, we'll go through the proper uh review from internal and external uh departments with respect to the uh previous use on site. Um, the previous owner during the demolition permit, um, my understanding is also remediated the site. But as part of the future site plan application, the applicant would also be required to obtain the record of site condition. So that's all been um, they've already started on that. They've done most of the site cleanup and remediation. Um, again, I just want to, I just going through the the uh drawings and they are very uh um tough to read because there's a lot of detail. I just want to clarify something that uh based on the conceptual plans that we've received, uh they are providing you know, over six hundred parking spaces, but they have also designated a twenty uh barrier free accessible spaces. I think I mentioned one that was up top, but there's a total of twenty. Some of those are uh below ground as well. And just to confirm that the total amenity space area being provided, I think Councilor Gal, you're right on. Uh, my calculation is a total of close to seventy thousand square feet within the building or inside or outside of the building.
Counselor.
Thank you, Mr. Ramuno. I'm interested in the indoor space because they're including about, I'm interested in the indoor space. It's, we live in Canada. We have, as we've seen, a long winter. There needs to be for this many people, for two thousand people, there needs to be, I would say, a relatively significant indoor amenity space. Um, I I just have to comment this because they're asking for um removal of the landscaping strip, the the ground floor apartments are like a few feet from the sidewalk. That's a very, very urban design. And I don't like it, but there it is. Um, Also, a a comment. This, because this is a mass, a major transit station area, they have to provide a hundred and fifty people or jobs per hectare. That is in the report. And and yet the, what they are providing is eight hundred and sixty-nine residents per hectare? That's they have to, the minimum is a hundred and fifty residents, and they're providing eight hundred and sixty-nine. So I am objecting to this density. I know Council Gallo hasn't heard anything, but I can guarantee you if we put an extra two thousand minimum residents in this area, there's going to be never ending complaints to the councillors that are sitting at this table. Do you have any idea why they went from a hundred and fifty or I know why, a hundred and fifty to eight hundred and sixty residents per hectare?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. So again, that hundred and fifty is a bare minimum. So within major transit station areas, you're going to see a lot higher. And I, again, maybe I should just clarify, one of the reasons staff is recommending approval of the official plan and the zoning bylaw and the increase in height and density in this location, a number of reasons. Again, we went, we went back to, going back to the fall, we had held a community information meeting, public planning meeting. I think Council Gallo mentioned, I attended both those meetings. There were some comments from residents, but most of the comments we received were positive, positive comments about creating, providing for additional housing and affordable housing in this location and part of the planning, my planning rationale for supporting the official plan amendment for the increase in density is, again, it supports the town's primary intensification, intensification growth hierarchy. Again, being because it is within our major transit station area, that is our focal point for any growth. And if we're going to see increased height, this is the place to put it. And it's also at the intersection of a local corridor being Wellington, which is also a regional arterial road, and industrial Parkway being a a major local collector road. And again, as we've heard, it's steps away from the go station.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Ramuno. I believe this is going to pass council. But my comment is that this is too dense for this area. We're going to have density all around it. There's hardly any snow storage area. I don't see any green space. There's apartments that are probably maybe less than nine feet away from a truck route, Industrial Parkway North. I think the parking is going to be taken care of, as you've said. It's, I I just find that it's too dense. And so I will vote against it.
Through you, Councilor.
Thank you. Just just some comments. I I've been a big proponent. Again, I'm going to repeat density in around the MTSA area, and I personally believe this is a perfect location for this kind of density when we're a stone's throw from the Aurora Go Station. As many of you recall, there was an application before council back in twenty eighteen and did not go through, and there was some subsidized housing from York Region at that time. And here we are seven years later, and yet we don't have anything built there. And I do truly believe that if we are going to be making any strides forward, this is an appropriate development. Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Mr. Ramuno. How motivated is the developer and is there an ETA, expression of ETA on the site plan?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I was just talking to one of the owner reps earlier before. They are, they are definitely motivated and should council approve the opian zoning. They do want to sit down with us to talk about next steps moving forward with a site plan. And again, also dealing with the affordability question, talking to us as well as York Region to take advantage of any incentives that may be available.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And I I do recall the conversations that were at council about this program, which in my opinion, I thought was very clever and it was a great incentive program to allow first time buyers to have some additional capital to allow them to have that down payment. And I felt it was a very innovative way in order to help out residents or people who currently want to live in Aurora. This was a great opportunity to allow that to happen. I also want to touch on some of the comments. I know we're talking about recreation facilities and the amenities rather, and I do recall this came up and we did speak about sixty-six thousand square feet in rooftop amenities and were quite impressed with actually the amount of amenity space that there was. And I still stand by the fact that I believe that they are have presented amenity space that would fulfill the amount of density that we have. And also being very central, you are very close to always your shops. You have the Aurora Community Center up the street. You have the high school right north side of it. You have another forest on the other side, Shepherd's Bush. You're surrounded by a lot of great pluses. I just feel like this is the right kind of development for this site. And I certainly don't want to be standing in the way from holding up any development that's going to end up putting shovels in the ground faster to allow that opportunity to have residents have a place to live in our town. I'll be voting in favor of this. Thank you.
Through you, Councilor Kim for the first time.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. From the report, the York Region Transportation and Traffic Department has no objections. Lake Simcoe Region Conservation Authority has no objections, and and those are are two of the main partners that whose analysis are important to myself. As as others have mentioned, you know, I'm also of the belief that you need density, especially in the MTSA. We've always talked about downtown revitalization and to ensure that our businesses in the downtown thrive and certainly, you know, having nine hundred plus units will certainly help along that way. So I would be in favor.
Councilor Gardner, second time.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm certainly in favor of density in this area. This is a perfect place for density. When the consultant was it at council, I asked how we could ensure that there would be density in this area. I wanted it to be affordable. This is four twelve-story buildings is just too dense. My opinion. The other thing about the the environmental feature and Lake Simcoe not having any comments on it. Lake Simcoe now comments on hazard lands and flooding. They, a lot of their power and money has been taken away by the province. And there are no hazard lands on this property, which is why there's no comment from Lake Simcoe. But I believe that this is a very significant environmental feature. And the soils around this are quite porous, and I would like to know how we're going to protect it. Excuse me, even for those who approve of this, I I think we would all like to know how we protect an environmental feature that we're building on top of. So perhaps that could be information that you provide, Mr. Mayor.
So, Mr. Through you, Mr. Mayor, just to be clear. So there is no environmental feature or hazard lands on this subject property, you know, conforms to the Lake Simcoe Protection Plan. I think, Councilor Gardner, what you're referring to is our official plan does identify the regional groundwater resource areas. And the majority of the town is is covered by that. As part of that review, the region and our own staff review the groundwater reports to ensure that there's property infiltration and there's no negative impact of any development on the groundwater resource protection area. And that's, again, we have all those reports. The region hasn't raised any issues. But again, just to be clear, it's not subject to a, there's no environmental features or hazard lands. It complies with the Lake Simcoe Protection Plan area. But, Council, to your point, Councilor Gardner, it's the groundwater resource mapping that I think you're referring to, and the majority of the municipality is covered by groundwater resource areas, and that's part of our review of any application.
Thank you, Mr. Munoz. And when I looked at Schedule Q, I was actually shocked by how much underground water we have. But as you say, it still needs to be protected and it's not under Lake Simcoe's jurisdiction any longer. It's, they their primary purpose is hazard lands flooding, protection of personal safety and property. So they wouldn't have a comment on this. But yeah, I I I'd just like to have some more information on. And also, though, it says the land is is the soil, it seems to me that the soils in this area might be a little difficult to build on. But anyway, anything further you could provide, I would appreciate. And again, this is the perfect area for intensification because of its proximity to the transit station, the transit area. But this is, they're going to be between two and three thousand residents in four twelve-story buildings. That's just too much for me. Thanks.
Through you, Councilor Gallo, second.
Thank you. Just some, some food for thought perhaps before next council, because I think it's beneficial to, if you have issues, to try to find more information and and solutions if you can, not just words in a microphone. And what I'd like to see, because the only reference to density is the is the minimum of one hundred and fifty. So would it be possible to you, Mr. Mayor, to, before now and council, to have a little analysis on our neighboring municipalities? I don't know how far we want to go in terms of density around MTSAs and and that ratio. Because yes, one fifty is the minimum, but I suspect we're going to find that it's in and around this density around MTSA. Because I don't want to just say something in a microphone and say, with all due respect, Councilor Gardner, something is too dense because I feel it's too dense. I would like to have some data and then we can have a rational discussion. And I hope you're open minded between now and council. And if the data comes back and says this is not off the chart, and if it is off the chart, maybe we can deal with it. But let's, let's take a look at it in a little more detail. As far as you had mentioned, you know, the the proximity to the building, to the street, I would remind everyone that this is part of the promenade. And one of the major influences of the promenade to buildings such as this is to push those buildings to the street front. That's what we mandated through that that program. Whereby we're saying, we don't want parking on the street. We want to push the 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 street front and the facade to the street level. Not unlike Young and Wellington Northwest Corner, all of that that development that's there, you can peek into those homes. Not unlike across the street, my home, right on the street. You can come and look into my window if you like. No different than this development. I see nothing wrong with that. In fact, this is what we're trying to to encourage. So, you know, between now and council, if we can answer some of those things, the parking things, I think it would be beneficial to to all of us. Density as well. Yeah, absolutely, density. Yeah, let's do a comparison. Hundred and fifty minimum is what the provincial policy is 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 stating, but I suspect it's going to be much higher if we do an analysis across the board.
Yeah, we we could, the information.
Your microphone's up.
Some municipalities north of us, like the the Pinkman, the Markham's and Vons, they got minimums of two fifty and five hundred, especially if they got higher order transit and subways. But again, we can provide a comparison and even to our neighbors to the north. I'm sure some of their proposals, projects along Davis Drive are probably approaching these densities that that are in this report.
I think that would be helpful for all of us.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Mr. Ramuno, if you could, I think if it it has been mentioned, I think from everyone, there's some information that a lot would like to see by the time we get to council. So I think that'd be beneficial to make sure that we have all the information. And I also encourage, if you do have some extra questions and you want to sit, sit down, I'm sure Mr. Ramuno would be more than happy to sit down with you between now and council. I know I'll take the opportunity to sit down with Mr. Ramuno and have a conversation in regards to this one. So that way I can make a a a proper decision come council. So call a vote. All those in favor? Posed, that carries. Fourteen point three. Councilor Gardner, you pulled this one. Do you want to move this?
I do, and I
Seconder. Councilor Gallo, thank you. Go ahead.
And I don't need to speak to it, Mr. Mayor. I've figured out my concern.
Any other comments or questions? All the vote, all those in favor? Posed, carries. Councilor Gillan, you pulled this motion. Do you want to move it? You, seconder, Councilor Gallo. It's yours, it's yours, your yeah, Councilor Gallo, seconder. Councilor Gillan, go ahead.
I'm in favor of the motion. Thank you, Councilor Gallo, for bringing this forward.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? Call the vote. All those in favor? Posed, that carries. Next one, Councilor Gillan, you pulled this one. Do you want to move it? You, seconder.
Yes, please.
Councilor Gallo, thank you. Go ahead, Councilor Gillan.
Yeah, I believe this is a, it's a good time to bring this forward. I know this has been on the books for a long time. And it's been quite a few years now. And I guess through you, Mr. Mayor and Mr. Siri, I'm assuming that we are safe to be able to disclose what we need to disclose.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I did review some of the reports. Generally, I'm not too concerned with the release of the reports, but they do need to be redacted in accordance with MPIPA. So there are some, there is some personal information. There's some financial information of businesses that would need to be redacted. And there's third-party reports that are attached to the reports that also would have to be not, would not be able to be disclosed. There may be other things. It'll have to be done in accordance with MPIPA.
Councilor.
Great. Thank you.
Any other comments, questions? All the vote, all those in favor? Posed, that carries. Councilor Gillan, you pulled this one. Did you want to move it?
Thank you. I was actually going to ask if we could defer this to council because we did receive this after four o'clock yesterday. It's a, it's a pretty big motion and a lot to absorb with what's being asked today. So my preference would be to defer the conversation until council.
You're seconder? Any comments, questions? All vote, all those favorite? Posed, that carries. Motion adjourned? Oh, oh, sorry. New business? Councilor Kim, Councilor Gallo, Councilor Gardner, Councilor Gillan.
Thank you. Just curious, I I was really curious as to your thoughts on item eleven point three, the Regional Rental Housing Incentive Program participation. And I didn't, I noticed you didn't vote, and I'm just wondering what your vote was.
You can pull it, the council, councilor, and I'll vote at that time.
So, sorry, I'm trying to understand. So are you suggesting that you didn't vote?
I saw that the required requirement to pass the vote was up, and so therefore I called the vote and said that the vote has passed at that time.
Okay, so you didn't vote.
Thank you, Councilor. And no other new business?
The, I've been reading the minutes and the Parks and Recreation. There's a Flurry Park upgrade, so I There's a Flurry Park upgrade. So this teen camp is not here, but I wanted to emphasize that it's important to have these community information meetings and it wasn't identified as such in the meeting. So I just wanted that as a reminder that it's very important to get feedback from the local community around those parks. So just bring that forward and hopefully that, that process is going to occur. The other thing is that I saw the public art strategy and I've had a number of people ask me about public art and display of public art. And so I'm, I'm wondering when that public art strategy is going to come forward to council through you, probably to Ms. McDougall.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I know that the team has been working on it and certainly has plans to bring it forward to council. If not for June or July, it'll hit the September agenda. But it is coming forward.
Counselor.
Thank you.
Okay. Public service announcement, Counselor Gallo.
Just had a question from the staff about the water feature at the Queens Diamond Jubilee Park. I know it was being worked on last year. Is there any, and it didn't actually end up working last year. And I'm trying to get ahead of it well before the nicer weather. Just to see whether or not anything's being done to get it functioning.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. My last update on this was that we had retained the advice of an expert fountain person. And there were some fundamental flaws in, I guess, the original installation. That's the last update I have. I don't know that there's a, a plan in place to rectify it yet. But I can certainly follow up with Sarah and our staff for an update for maybe council.
I, I would love that. I, I, I believe that that never functioned from day one. And I believe we still do work with the contractor that did that work. And I, I believe staff should have a very good conversation with them. That they should be responsible to be fixing that shouldn't be on the tax dollars. We've already paid for it once. And I don't believe it ever worked from the, from day one. And I can probably pull up emails to Mr. Downing from years ago that nothing ever happened. And if we continue to do work with the, the people who installed it, I believe they should be responsible for it.
Public service announcement.
This is May. And so the kickoff of that is the Aurora Farmers Market on May the 3rd. So that's the opening of the farmer's market. So if people are interested in getting involved in that, they should make their way there.
Looking forward to my female sandwich. Counselor Gallo, PSA. Counselor Gardner, PSA.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I, I'm actually going back to the month of March. March 22nd was World Water Day, which highlights the sustainable management of fresh water resources. And I'd like to note that this is a crucial function of the Oak Ridge's Marine to filter drinking water for many people and speaks to sustainability. March 21st was the International Day for the Elimination of Racial Discrimination. This was declared by the UN in 1966. And March was Endometriasis Awareness Month. It's an extremely painful disease that still is misunderstood and underserviced. And it can compromise all organs of the brain, of the body, including the brain. So, uh, sorry, I missed telling you about Endometriasis Awareness Month. And that's it.
Let's go. Counselor Kim. Just got a couple here with me. Easter Palooza is back, formerly known as Hello Spring. This family favorite is a great way to welcome spring and the Easter Bunny. Everyone can join us Saturday, April 19th at the Aurora Senior Center for a day packed with themed indoor and outdoor activities. Plus a special guest, the parents by none other than the Easter Bunny. Pre-registration is required and you can learn more at aurora.ca/easter. The Town of Aurora has partnered with EnviroWorld to raise awareness about water conservation. From now through to May 2nd, Aurora residents can buy a discounted rain barrel online. Join us in preserving water, reducing runoff and cutting costs. Order your rain barrel online at aurora.ca/rainbarrel. The Town of Aurora is conducting a park study and your input matters. Tell us what works and what doesn't by sharing your feedback in our online survey. Have your say at engageaurora.ca/parkingstudy. And if you don't know, we are having our annual spring community cleanup day, which is on Saturday, April 26th from 8:00 AM to 12:00 PM. It's a great way to get together with fellow Aurans and keep the town looking beautiful and litter free. Cleanup kits provided while supplies last. And register individually or as a group at aurora.ca/cleanup. And last but not least, Aurora's Youth Innovation Fair is back. So if you know a student in grades four to 12 with a brilliant idea, registrations are now open. And for more information, you can visit aurora.ca/ youthinnovation. It's actually a great, great event. You go there and you see how brilliant some of the youth are in our community. Some of their amazing ideas and inventions. So I'm actually looking forward to that again. Counselor Gardner, did you have something?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Following on your information about the litter cleanup. I would like to congratulate the Aurora Highlands Litter Cleanup Crew. They collected 12 bags of litter on a rainy Saturday. And it's a good example of how everybody can clean up their neighborhoods. So I'm glad the townwide one is coming up. Thank you.
Okay. And then just one more, because we won't have PSAs at council. April 27th is the Run for South Lake. So looking forward to seeing everyone there that, it's always a great time. Raising funds for our community hospital, while the hospital I know is in technically in Newmarket, it is our hospital. So, you know, it's a great time to get out there. It's a great run. Counselor Kim, I know you'll probably have the fastest time out of anyone sitting here. So I'm looking forward to that. Counselor Gardner, again, just.
Mr. Mayor, there will be members of our community celebrating Passover, which starts on the 11th. And it's an interesting holiday. Can't eat any bread.
Thank you. Oh, and if you, if you don't know, council, we did pull out what is called a relic from the, from George Street School today. Steph pulled it out, we were there. It's, I guess you, some would call it a time capsule, but it wasn't a, it's not called time capsule, it's called a relic. We opened it up. There is an old Aurora Aurora banner paper. There is also some coins in there. There is a penny, a quarter, a dime, a 50 cent piece and also a dollar. A silver dollar, mind you, because they didn't have loonies back then. And there was also the original minutes from when the school board approved the building of that school as well. All those items are from 1957 and they were put in there. So I'm not sure how staff or Grand and Michelle at the Aurora Museums are going to display that, but I'm sure it's going to be displayed. If any of you want to see the items, I would just reach out to Mr. McDougall or even Michelle. And I'm sure you can just head on over there, over to the town square and, and take a look. Or you can wait for them to be displayed. Motion to adjourn. Counselor Reese, second. Counselor Kim, all those in favor. Posed, that carries. We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.